With silence, and then we'll ask Mr. Marvin Thompson to lead us in the place to play.
Perfect. Shall we pledge?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Shall we call the roll?
Mr. Bradley?
Here.
Mrs. Butcher Conway?
Here.
Mrs. Singer Erdley?
Here.
Mr. Lesby?
Here.
Mr. Showalter?
Here.
Mrs. Tingleseam?
Here.
Mrs. Tackett?
Here.
Mr. Thompson?
Here.
We have a quorum. In fact, we have a full house. Each of you should have a copy of the minutes of our last regularly scheduled meeting of June the 25th. If you'd like to let those over for any possible corrections or additions.
Motion for approval, the way they're written in prayer.
Thank you.
I'll second.
And second. If there are no corrections or additions, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. Also, in your packet, you should have received a copy of our latest check register. If you could indicate if you've received that. Thank you. Okay, we've got a, as council can see, and if anyone who has kind of looked at our agenda tonight, we've got a very robust agenda with some pretty large discussions. So, we're pretty excited about approaching this council meeting. First, though, we'll start with those who have signed up for public comment. If I could first call on Miko Smith.
Hello, my name's Miko. I haven't seen some of you guys in a while, so I work with Georgetown Fairness. I just wanted to stop by and personally invite you guys to our event that we're having at the middle of this month, on July 21st. We've sent out invitations to you guys personally as well, but I thought I would just come and hand out flyers.
Yes ma'am.
And that's it, since you have a long journey.
Thank you. That was quick. Thank you.
Appreciate the invitation.
Thank you very much.
So, Ms. Smith, I've been losing a syllable of your first name. Maeko?
Mi-eko.
Mi-eko.
Mi and a K and then Eko.
Okay, I'll get it right one of these years. Thank you. Next on the list for public comment is Mr. Frank Mason.
Thank you, Mayor. I don't live in the city, but I do own and pay taxes for 24 properties within the city. I'm the owner of the property at the corner of Constitution and South Hamilton. At that property is 138 South Hamilton, which houses the Keystone Montessori School. And it shares the playground and parking area with the Montessori Experience. These two schools, two schools combined have approximately 80 students, ages 3 to 12. There are three storm drains in the parking lot, and there's one in the street at the entrance to the lot. During these past storms, we had two very serious storms. Considerable damage was done to our property, both inside and out. Most of the damage was done during the first storm. If I may, Mr. Mayor?
Sure.
First picture depicts a little bit of the back area of the, this is a garden, garden area. All the, all the artwork there is done by the students of the two schools. Second picture shows while some of the flooding was underway. And I got there as the rain was, was stopping, but the rain inundated, inundated the parking lot and came in through four of the doors, four, five of the doors of the building. The third picture shows more of the flood in the parking lot. And as you can see, the, although there are three, there are two, maybe three drainage basins or drains in the, in that back part of the parking lot, you don't see any swirling of water going down. Next picture, you see the fencing that has been ripped out by the water, the velocity of the water, the velocity of the water. You see further damage. In the next picture, basketball goal down, the kids' artwork is down. The next picture, which is of considerable concern, is that the, the velocity of the groundwater coming down the backyards of the property along College Street was so ferocious that many of these fences in this garden area, play area, were ripped from their concrete foundations. And in fact, you can see the concrete foundations were likewise moved by the water. This is groundwater coming down, coming down the street behind. The pressure of the water in the storm drain popped the top off of the storm drain, as you can see in that next picture. And then this last picture is just showing some of the ripped up vegetation that ended up on top of the, one of the drains. We found two dead raccoons in the, in the parking lot that were drowned. I'm told by Louis Wolf that his property still has water in the basement. I'm unable to get insurance for the lack of surface water control by the city. I've been told that the upper landowners really have responsibility for the water coming down so that if, at some point, there might have to be some kind of legal action. I'm told that the city's been aware of the drainage problems in this area for some time. I'm told, and I'm not an expert in this stuff, but I'm told that possible previous efforts to help the situation have possibly made it worse. I believe the city has a responsibility to protect property from street water. And a lot of that is just street water coming down. And I hope that a serious and constructive plan can be put in place. I'm also told that there's a Section 319 EPA regulations that there's funding available for non-point source water. And I guess that's about it. Any questions?
No, sir. We're, we're very aware, Frank, that we have some severe groundwater issues in several parts of town, in particular, our oldest parts of town, where the stormwater infrastructure was installed
Years ago.
Hundred years ago for a community of four or 5,000 that was sized for that. And frankly, some of the older parts of our stormwater system simply do not have the capacity to take away all of that water when there's an extreme rain event like we had during the period that you gave us the pictures for. Counsel has already spent some public funds trying to assist you with drainage on that lot. We've, we have done things in the past. I'm not sure where you, we'd get an understanding of the things that we've done have made the situation worse. That's never been our intention. But we appreciate the information. We think that you have lots of company in this situation. And I'd be glad to hear from anyone who has an idea of how we fund the storm sewer improvements that, that might be necessary.
I thank you.
Lori Saunders. Festival of the Horse.
It'll be right around the corner. So, the Festival of the Horse will begin this year with the Chili Cook Off kicking us off on Thursday, September 6th. And we'll run through September the 9th on Sunday. Couple of things that we're asking for, that's a little bit different this time, is that rather than after the Chili Cook Off opening back up the streets on Main Street at midnight to leave them closed, I had a logistics meeting with the fire department, Public Works, EMA, EMS, and they all agreed it was much, much easier if we go ahead like we used to and close that street down for the rest of the evening, so it would close on Thursday at 2:00 and open back up on Sunday at 8:00. Last year, we had opened back up at midnight. So, that Friday morning, we were trying to get cars off the street. And it made it very difficult to have to go back to some of the same people we had already gotten after for leaving their car on the street on that Thursday and ask them to move it again. And several of them did say, "You'd be better off just leaving it closed" because we thought we could park here, even though there's signs up on every light post downtown. But we felt like that would make it a little bit easier on all of us who are trying to get cars out of the street and actually on the residents too, because they won't have to get back out there and keep moving their vehicles when we come in and ask them to move them so that we can close streets. So, that is the only change that we're asking for, for this year. Everything else pretty much so stays the same. Once again, on the Tuesday night, we'll do a little bit of roping off at the backside of City Hall for the carnival to come in on Tuesday evening. And on Wednesday, we will leave, like we did last year, parking for all City Hall employees to be able to use that one section in the back. And in addition to behind the Justice Center and the County Attorney's Office, we do not put any, you know, any carnival rides through there. So, all of that is, will remain open for the, for the public. In addition, we are also just going from Hamilton to Broadway on Main. We're not crossing the street. That seemed to have worked out really well for our community, and we want to, we want to keep it that way, so.
Yeah, if we can leave that street open, logistically, it makes a big difference for the community. Any questions for Lori?
You do mean 2018, not 2017, right?
Where'd I put that? Yes, it would be 2018. We are out of 2017. Yes, 2018. Sorry about that.
With that clarification, as a motion, is there a second?
Second.
I'll second.
If there are no questions, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Hey, while Lori's in front of us all today, our tourism department was presented a huge award, for those of you that were at the chamber luncheon. We were recognized as an economic engine of Scott County. And it's a very specific award that requires, it's got very specific criteria. And our tourism department met those criteria, and we were so designated today. So, Lori, congratulations.
Thank you. It was all about the community and the community partnerships. It's pretty amazing to think that tourism's economic impact is about $189 million a year. That is because of, yes, and that is all because of good community partners, good community leaders, good commissioners, and a community that embraces tourism and understands how important it is to our community. Because it's outsiders paying that, not us, which is always nice, too.
It's the community, it's the community led by Lori Saunders, and Lori, thank you.
There you go.
I could as vice chair of it, Lori and her staff, what makes it all happen.
Thank you. All you all, listening to our crazy ideas and giving us permission to do it.
Thank you, Lori. Thank you, Lori. And then we have for public comment, Mr. Stephen Price.
Thank you. Mayor Prather and the council, I left you a stack of papers a while ago, which I hope you'll read. And the, the first half dozen or so sheets of paper are citations from, or excerpts, I should say, from our local most recent history books, Scott County History by Bevins, Apple, and Johnston. And falling right on the heels of a promotion for tourism, I feel like, maybe you'll think I'm a wet blanket, but all of these excerpts from Bevins, Apple, and Johnston indicate that in the early history of Georgetown, the reason there was no industry was that hand skills faded away because of imports. And an increased travel options caused people to become mobile and to go shopping in Cincinnati and Lexington, rather than to produce things here in Georgetown. And I'll, I'll quote this for you. In other words, mobility damages productivity. And that's the, of course, tourism is almost sheer mobility. And the opposite of tourism is people staying near their homes and getting up in the morning with the intent to be productive until they go to bed at night. And, and of course, mobility interferes with all that, as does tourism. If you look on, on the first page, unfortunately, I cut the number off from the copy machine, but it's the first among those excerpts. It says that "In most towns, free blacks live scattered among whites near their places of employment, and this pattern prevailed in Georgetown." You note, people lived near where they worked, so that they could walk to work. It's not the case now, and I talked with Attorney Harley the other day, and he talked about how important it is that work happened here, he used both hands. Work happens here, production happens here, farming happens here. And never shall the activities in one be allowed to occur in another of those zones. And you can see that this requires mobility on the part of anybody who lives in Georgetown. If you can't work in the residential zone, it means you've got to go to work somewhere. You've got to go, you've got to move. You've got, and the act of moving is lost productivity. But that's what Attorney Harley says, it's the way it's got to be. No, no working in a, in a residential zone, no homemaking in a, in a work zone, and no, none, neither of the two in a commercial zone. You've got to go somewhere to buy, you've got to go somewhere to work, you've got to come home to eat and sleep. Obviously, that is a very inefficient historic evolution in this town from, from the days when, as I say, people lived near their places of employment. Let's see, I hope you'll read, I won't read all these, but I'll say one more. "The importance of hand trades decreased during the post-bellum period, after the Civil War, especially after the opening of the Southern Railroad increased the availability of less expensive manufactured goods imported from elsewhere." So, people weren't making anything here, because they could get them cheaper if they made and shipped in on the railroad. Try as it might, Georgetown could not establish a stable industrial base because of imports and because of travel, shopping in Lexington and Cincinnati.
Steve, that's a helpful look at history, but it has nothing to do with our current circumstances.
Well, that's what I'm just getting to, Mayor Prather.
If you could come to your point, that would be helpful.
Just what, I want to, to introduce what I've got to say with those excerpts, because you're, the newspaper said that you're going to approach the council tonight with your plan for a sewer extension to the trailer parks on Law Road, as well as your plans for improving, I think it's called Old Oxford Road, and part of, what's the one that's Lexus Way, is that correct?
That's correct.
Yeah. Both of these projects are going to enforce or incentivize more motorized mobility, more motor travel. Obviously, if you improve a road, that's going to incentivize motor travel. You say, "How is putting a sewer to the trailer park going to increase motor travel?" It will increase motor travel because people who live at the trailer park cannot make the money to pay the sewer bill without leaving the trailer park to go get a job to pay the sewer bill. Unless they've got a, unless they're going to counterfeit money, which I don't think, you know, I hopefully, I mean, I never heard of that happening. But in other words, to get the money, people have to leave their homes to go to work for a paycheck to pay the sewer bills. And all of this, most of this, the remaining material here, in fact, all the remaining material, other than the excerpts from the, from the history book, are excerpted from paperwork I've delivered to your homes or mailed to you several months ago when this issue of the, of the sewer line was before you, I think, I'm not sure when it was, maybe four or five months ago. So, you, you have these, this paperwork, you already have it. I hope you haven't thrown it away. I hope you, I hope you still have the big, large, white, big, almost an inch thick of paperwork that I either mailed or delivered to each of you some months ago. And if you look at that paperwork, you will conclude, as I have, that forcing, that incentivizing people to drive for a paycheck, to pay a sewer bill, when they could be staying home and using the, the compostable excreta to make fertilizer within walking distance of their homes, if not right outside their door, that is the efficient production model. To force people to flush their excreta, potentially composted fertilizer, away and to increase their dependence on the government to manage it is the wrong way to go from a horticulturist view of production. And I know, Mayor Prather, your background is banking. And when you see a problem, you want to finance it and alleviate the problem through financing. And I'm, I'll conclude with this. I meant to, did you see the last news graphic, not, maybe not the current one, but the one before? There's a photograph there of people in Stampin' Ground, men, women, children, maybe a dozen people in the photograph, out picking up limbs. Did you see it? There was a storm, a storm had blown down a bunch of trees, and they were out managing the storm damage.
Please come to your point. We've got a really busy meeting in front of us.
That we, that your public boss, you should be incentivizing people to get on their feet and do like those people did in Stampin' Ground, which is address the storm damage problem with their bare hands. And they should be addressing this sewer problem similarly with their bare hands.
Thank you.
Thank you. Not their bare hands, with hand tools, let me say, hand tools.
Thank you. That should conclude all of the public comments. A couple of brief mayor's comments, and they will be brief. We've got real business to tend to. Did want to remind the council that the Georgetown Scott County Regional Airport Air Fest is this weekend. It's one of the most exciting events in this community. It should be very well attended both Saturday and Sunday, and would encourage everybody to, to take a look out there if you can. They, they've really worked hard on the preparation. Want to thank the Scott County Quanis Club for the great job they did with the parade on the 4th of July.
Long parade.
And the VFW Post 24 for hosting all the festivities in Oriole Spring Park. Turned out to be a real good day. Also, since it did not come up under public comments, I want it to come up for discussion tonight. And that is, I wanted to address a very widespread concern in the community about fireworks and the extent to which they're used, not just here, but, but everywhere. I'm sure my experience has been similar to each of yours. I've gotten numerous phone calls and texts. July the 5th, our phone lines stayed lit up pretty much all day long. We, we have real empathy for pet owners that don't do well in that regard and veterans that might suffer from PTSD. And, and we know that, that it affects some people very negatively. And I just wanted to give an opportunity for, for us to talk about this, if, if we need to. It is America's birthday, and, and we frequently celebrate Independence Day with fireworks and things of that nature. It seems like when the hour becomes 11:30 and midnight and 1 o'clock is when it becomes excessive. And of course, now people use these mortar rams.
Shake your windows.
Shake your windows. And people have noticed that we have a number of firework establishments, tents, all over town. And I do want to emphasize that we are aware that Lexington has a very restrictive fireworks ordinance.
I think they need one.
They, their ordinance, if it goes up or it goes bang, it's illegal. But yet, all over Facebook, from our Lexington friends, Lexington had the exact same problem that we did with neighborhood fireworks.
Even though it was illegal?
Even though it's illegal.
It's hard, it's hard to.
They start on the weekend before and go to the weekend after.
It comes an enforcement issue. And Chief Bossy and Assistant Chief Swanigan and I have talked about this at length. What the chief and I want to assure the council is, we do respond to calls about fireworks. We did it before this 4th of July, and we continue to do it this past weekend, when it was after the 4th of July. And I think what is a fairly reasonable policy that the chief has followed is, we will respond to complaint calls and will, when we come to the complaint call, our ordinance is written such that you can't shoot off fireworks within 200 feet of a structure. If you strictly apply that ordinance, it means you can't light a firecracker in Georgetown.
Isn't our ordinance also saying that we can only have fireworks on 4th of July and New Year's?
It is certain hours.
Certain hours.
Well, that's maybe something we need to look at.
What the chief's been doing, they've been responding to complaint calls and asking people to stop, which is a courtesy visit. Later, if they're called back to that location, they will issue a citation. So, there is enforcement. We've each talked to a couple of citizens, I think, at least. I get the impression that several of us have had some common conversations with some citizens who chastise us for, for not following our ordinance. I believe that to a reasonable degree, we're attempting to enforce the ordinance. But always happy to entertain, if council wants to discuss a more restrictive ordinance, we're willing to do that. But it does seem to be an issue that rises in early July. It's not just Georgetown. It seems to be, society has coarsened a little bit, and we're less respectful of each other. I think that shows in this kind of behavior as well. But it had been brought to my attention enough, I thought it would come up under public comments. Since it didn't, I made sure that I was at least going to broach the topic with you all. It's a tough one.
Well, maybe we need to look at our ordinance and see what we can do, a little bit, one way or the other with it.
We, we, again, we can certainly strengthen what we, we can limit what we sell here. Chief, have I described your policy pretty well?
Mayor, it's not going to matter if you restrict it, because it was restricted before. People drove to Tennessee and brought it back.
Right.
And people are going to continue to do that.
Yeah.
You know, and we can restrict, you know, the 4th of July to 11 o'clock for fireworks, if you wanted to, instead of midnight, maybe.
On that day.
And maybe just have it, you know, depending on when it falls, you know. The 4th of July fell on the middle of the week this year. So, of course, people want to party the Saturday before, and then want to party the Saturday after.
And they want to shoot fireworks both times?
And I, and I will be the first to say that we did on Wednesday, but we were respectful. We waited till it got dark, and the, the park was doing theirs, so we did ours. We, we shot it out in the road, away from people. But when we were done, we were done. We wrapped it up, and everybody went home. But I know everybody didn't do that, you know, but that was being respectful. By 10:30, we were done. That's not too late. But, you know, you can, we can, we can make the ordinance a little bit more strenuous. I personally don't want to not celebrate the 4th of July, the, the birth of our country. I'm not for that at all. I'm not for that at all. I, you know, I want to continue to do that.
Sure.
And, you know, we can restrict it and we can put limits on it, but at the end of the day, there are those people out there, just like anything else, when they decide they're going to shoot them off, they're going to shoot them off. That's what's going to happen, correct?
Great example.
So, you know.
Yeah.
And I'm, you know, if, if we need to address our ordinance a little bit more and make it a little bit stricter, that's fine, to give teeth to the police department if they need that, to do it.
Well, if you all would think about it, given that we just lived through the holiday, I find it appropriate to bring it up. If, if there's things you want to discuss, we'd be glad to talk with you about it and then bring it back to the board.
That'd be good.
Be good.
All right, thank you. Also, I wanted the council to know that we, we're continuing with our talks with folks in the Boston neighborhood, both about how we can best serve Boston in a number of different ways, but also with the specific idea of a potential CDBG grant application. And we've, we've assured the community over and over that the city's not going to apply for a CDBG unless the community wants us to apply for a CDBG.
Right.
And the purpose of this, we're having a hearing on July 17th at 6 o'clock here in these chambers. It's week from today.
Tuesday.
Week from tomorrow. For that CDBG hearing, so if anybody's been keeping up with that process or wants to be a part of that CDBG hearing, we'll have it in here on the 17th.
What time is that, Mayor?
6 o'clock.
Thank you.
Okay. And that is all of the mayor's comments for tonight, unless I think of some more later. You'll notice we glorified the city engineer with this agenda by giving him A through I. For his work tonight. And there's several issues in here that we're really delighted to be talking about. We had told the council that we were going to work real hard on submitting a build grant application, and you all very graciously allowed us to hire Bell Engineering to help us put this application together. We, and we have the folks from Bell Engineering here tonight to give us a presentation of the work that they've done and what we think this application will look like. And we'd like to seek an, after they present and answer our questions, we would like to seek a resolution approving our application for a build grant. The project that we've chosen to focus on, as has been mentioned in the local paper, is significant improvements to Old Oxford Road. An entire, in fact, this iteration of this project includes the entire length of Old Oxford. And rather than that project simply being a, a city street without curbs or a country road without curbs, we've engineered, we've engineered this to be a curb and gutter the entire justice.
I may be mistaken on that. Just looking at the picture. They'll talk a little bit more about it. There were different versions.
All right. We think that improvement is necessary, given the, again, given the Joe Kane's presentation about planning and zoning today. He used the maps that we've looked at before that show that most of the subdivisions to the south and west of Georgetown are either fully mature or nearly built out. The areas where there are subdivisions with capacity on the zoning map, either yellow or green, are all almost exclusively on the Old Oxford Road quarter. There are 1,500 additional rooftops already planted for Old Oxford Road. So we think this improvement becomes essential to the community's safety. Then, as a part of the same grant application, we'd like to extend the Lexus Way for the eight tenths of a mile to give that hydraulic relief to Old Oxford Pike. Then we've also included in this grant a sign, to us, a significant sum of money that could be used for some preliminary engineering concepts to help us improve Connector Road. So these, these kind of all mixed together in that way. We anticipate this being just over an $11 million total project. Just over $8 million being grant funds and the match funds we anticipate being $2.8 million. We would expect before we finalize this that we would have a formal resolution from the county to be our partner on the match, since some of the improvements to Old Oxford are in the county. So this would be a true partnership project. So with that kind of a tee-up, I'll, I'll let you all make your presentation, please.
Here's the clicker. If it doesn't work, you can simply point towards that window back there and she'll click for you.
Well, Mayor, we appreciate that introduction, overview. Let me hit a button here and make sure that no one...
Yep, you're just going to have to point that way, sorry.
Yep, okay. So, all right. Quick introduction. My name is Josh Carrick. I'm with Bell Engineering. I've also got Steve Cottle with me this evening. We're going to tag team just a brief overview of the build grant application process, and then Steve's going to do a little bit of detailed information for you guys on some of the concepts. So with that, we'll go ahead and go to the, the build grant as a, as a whole. One more? There we go. So the build grant is a federal program developed by the U.S. Department of Transportation. It's an acronym, as most good grant projects are, building, are better utilized, utilizing investments to leverage development. So they're looking for opportunities for transportation projects to lever, leverage future development projects and current development projects. This program replaces the old Tiger Grant that you may have heard of over the last, you know, eight, 10 years. It's been a program out there, just a new brand on the same type of funding source. Couple of recent examples of Tiger Grant funding, one of them in Lexington, part of the town branch was, got a portion of that funding, and I believe Frankfurt got a little bit of money for their riverfront recently out of the Tiger Grant. Couple of new things or different things out of this program versus the other, and I'll, I'll get to that in a second, actually. Let me finish this slide out. The idea here is they want to focus on projects that, you know, build towards new things and, and help enhance areas of towns or communities that are underserved right now with some new transportation opportunities. Specifically, they look towards road projects, bridges, transit trails, intermodal type things. So a lot of different components to this, but really, you know, what they're looking for is a, a regional approach to this, not just a, maybe a single item. So the grant criteria, the full application is due July 19th, so it's a pretty quick turnaround and it's a pretty robust application process. We are well into, into the portions of it and will definitely hit our goal to, to get that all submitted on time. The grant has two levels that it, they're dealing with this year. They have a rural program and an urban program. The urban program allows for projects to be funded up to 80%. Rural program allows up to 100%. But besides that, then they have a whole metric for merit-based selection. And so they've got about seven or eight different categories here that they want folks to respond to, and these are some of the items that we're working through in the grant application itself. So safety is very important. You've got to make sure that you're improving safety. You want to be economically competitive. You want to show that the project's going to continue to foster development in your project area. You want to make sure that the project improves quality of life. So in this case, bike lanes, bike trails, those types of things. Have the ability to have good state of repair, so does the community have the ability to long-term be able to maintain whatever is built? So we, we note that. Innovation, and what kind of opportunities are there beyond just this program to tie things together with, and we're working on that. Partnerships and partners and support. We want to make sure that we get folks like the county and other folks to contribute letters of support or financially to the project. Those definitely help in, in how things get scored. And then long-term, they, they look for you to look into opportunities for long-term investment as a funding source for long-term. So under project need, of course, this is just kind of a snapshot of exactly what the mayor was saying as far as, you know, what are some of the driving forces that need us to look in this area specifically as to what those benefits might need to be? So obviously, it's the continued growth and expansion of Toyota and the neighborhoods out there on the east side of town. Of course, with the, you know, the, the other parts of town that are filling up with current development, that's also pushing development, more development housing in that area. So you want to use that as part of your, your need, as well as the catalyst is the new interchange there at I-75, kind of showing that as a, you know, here's some investment dollars that have been done by the state, and here's how we're going to take that and expand that into the residential areas. You want to, we're going to show that there's connectivity and improve connectivity, decrease congestion, and improve safety all at the same time. So those are key items there that need to be addressed. And ultimately, you know, what are those outcomes for this area? So one, we want to lower those congestion areas at peak times. We want to have better access from the new roads into the existing neighborhoods and some of those future neighborhoods. Continue to introduce transportation alternatives, again, as bike trails and bike lanes. And ultimately, you know, need to update and modernize some of those agricultural areas as far as that road infrastructure into, you know, into the community that's growing in that direction and make sure that all those needs are met at the same time. So with that, I'll let Steve kind of go through.
Thank you. As Josh indicated and the mayor so fulcantly stated, the project is in the northeastern portion of Scott County, or Georgetown, and actually extends out into Scott County. Although the project is being put together as a singular project for purposes of preparing the application, it actually has three phases. Phase one is shown in yellow on this exhibit. It is the extension, approximately eight tenths of a mile extension of Lexus Way. It would begin at Cherry Blossom Way and end at Old Oxford Road. The second phase of the project, shown in blue on this exhibit, is approximately 3.1 miles of widening with some minor alignment changes for safety. And the third and final phase of the project, or the third and final component, is shown in purple on this exhibit. It's the only phase of the project that does not have a construction component. As the mayor said, what we're looking for here is to obtain funding, to do a comprehensive report and study on Connector Road. As you know, that's one of the most congested roads in Georgetown. The study would look at new traffic on the road, do existing, do traffic counts on the road, and also look at all the sequencing of lighting and whether or not new lights are needed on that road or whether or not it may be more appropriate just to expand it to additional lanes. The first exhibit here you're seeing is a exhibit showing Lexus Way extended. This exhibit shows Lexus Way extended in its full build-out mode. When, in its full build-out mode, it would have four 11-foot driving lanes. Those would be separated eastbound and westbound with a median. It would also have a 10-foot wide shared pedestrian and bikeway path. It should be noted here, though, that for purposes of the build grant application, we're currently seeking funding to buy the entirety of the right-of-way, to construct the entire project, but the initial phase of the project will only construct two of the four lanes and the bike pedestrian pathway. That is simply just to make most appropriate use of funds. In the future, when traffic indicates the need, then the second two lanes can be built without interrupting traffic flow on the first two lanes. The second exhibit you see here is a widening of Old Oxford Road. It consists of two 11-foot wide driving lanes along with two 5-foot wide bike pathways. This also has a shoulder and appropriate buffer between the driving lanes and the bike lanes.
Can I just get a quick question?
Yes.
Do you need two bike lanes in a situation like that?
And it's possible that we could do away with, do with one. I would refer that to Josh.
Yeah. There's opportunity to do, to do it either way. You could either go with a shared-use trail on, on one side of the road or, or do the bike lanes there with traffic. It does provide a little bit different cross-section in how much right-of-way that we're going to need to, to look at for that corridor. So it's measurable.
If we get the grant, I'm thrilled, okay? I'm not, I'm not being, it's just kind of interesting. You've got a 10-foot wide walking path and then two bike lanes in addition to that. For this area, I mean, I, you know, kind of understand the area, it seems excessive.
Right. Lexus Way would get the, the shared-use trail right now, but Old Oxford would get the bike lanes.
I got you.
So we could look at doing all...
I got you now.
And, and the reason for that is the portion of Lexus Way that was recently constructed, that is the way that that was put together. There is a 10-foot wide shared pedestrian and bikeway lane there.
Would, just to reinforce, one of the sensitivities that the council will have to address on improving Old Oxford is, as much as the improvements are needed, some of the residents of Old Oxford don't necessarily want the road taken up their entire front yard. So we'll need to balance having an adequate width road, adequate width road, but not to the extreme so as to further take property from the chase of property owners. So that's a balancing act that the council will be interested in.
Certainly. As far as project budget, the three components of the project combined, they have a total budget of $11.5 million. Based on the breakout that we've been working with in preparing the application so far, of that $11.5 million, approximately $8.6 million will be sought in build grant funding with approximately $2.9 million match and local funds. We've also broken out each phase of the project. Lexus Way, first phase of the project, the cost associated with it's currently $3.3 million, of which $2.5 million will be sought through the build grant and approximately $831,000 would be local funds. Phase two of the project, the Old Oxford Road widening, is approximately an $8 million project budget with $6 million being sought through the build grant and $2 million in local funds. And lastly, phase three, the Connector Road Study, we have budgeted preliminarily $175,000 for that study. As I said, it is a very detailed study that encompasses many things. As you all know, Connector Road is, is very congested and we would like to obtain sufficient funding to be able to come up with a verifiable solution that would for once and all end that problem. I can tell you that I drive on it every day and I understand its issues very well. Yes?
Would these phases, how long in between each phase? Are we looking at like two or three different budget cycles? And then also, the second question I have is, is on the Connector Way road study, would there be an opportunity to apply for another grant? We came to a conclusion on what to do with it?
Yes, there should be an opportunity. Last question first, there should be an opportunity to apply for another grant. As far as how would this work across multiple budget cycles? Yes, the project would be constructed, would be designed and constructed across a multitude of budget cycles, so that could be broken up. And we'll talk about some key dates here on the last slide. But as I said, with the connector study, we'd be looking for $131,000 in the build grant application and $44,000 in local funds. With that, some key project dates. As Josh said, applications are due on July 19th of this year. They're actually due at 8:00 PM Eastern Time, that's the deadline. There will be an announcement on December 18th of this year telling all the successful applicants that they've been chosen for funding. Construction must be underway by September 30th of 2020, and all build funds, funds must be expended and the project closed out by September 30th of 2025. So that goes back to your question, depending exactly on how things are sequenced, there would be the opportunity to spread that over multiple budget cycles. that over multiple budget cycles.
You just got a little ahead of yourself, didn't you?
What's a good, good question?
A lot of it's going to depend on whether we get all the phases funded too. The reason we split it up into three phases is so they can say, all right, we can't afford to give you 11, but we'll give you the three and a quarter to do Lexus Way. Come back next year for Old Oxford.
That's correct.
Mayor, this is another big project, and I know we're not committing to it, but I don't see any reason not to, why not to go after the build grant and hope that on December the 18th, you can share with us some good news?
Some good news. And, and again, we, we were encouraged to apply for this grant straight from a conversation from Secretary Chow to Richard Hamilton. So, it's, we're, and we've done the background work to where we've got letters of recommendation being drafted by Representative Barr and Senator McConnell's office. Stakeholders in this area that we wish to include letters of support in our final application. So, this is about as fast a track as it could possibly be on.
It certainly is. To put it, as you well know, Mayor, some of the people have been, worked on the actual tiger grants for years, so it's being rapidly put together, but everything appears to be coming together, and we remain on schedule to make this middle, I think, if not before, actually.
And, and I also want to say to the council, we've, we've got a lot of big projects on our plate right now, and we've committed to use cash for those big projects. We're aware of the commitments we've made, that the possibility of being able to affect 11.5 million dollars worth of improvements for a million and a half dollar investment from the city is just too great not to go after.
Mayor, I'll make the motion for proof of the resolution.
No second.
Thank you. And second. Are there any other questions? All in favor, say aye. Opposed? Gentlemen, thank you. We look forward to finishing up this process with you.
All ready.
Item C on your agenda is, for some time, we have been working on a new 911 system for Georgetown and Scott County. I think we've, we've about talked this topic to death, even though we're just getting ready to buy it. This has done been a lot of work on behalf of the seven agencies that we dispatched for. We've gone through the bidding process. We've gone through a 30-day negotiation process, and pleased that we're now at a point where our consultants from TUSA Consulting, Mr. Dean Hart, is ready to make a final recommendation to the council for us to move forward, hopefully with this radio transaction. We have, I do want to say that the joint meeting that the city council and the fiscal court had to talk about this project turned out to be very helpful. When Dean was working on some of the, the late-stage negotiations with our successful contractor, he drew upon some of the comments that council members and fiscal court members made, specifically where, where there was concern focused on this being a turnkey operation, and were we going to maintain it well enough that everything stayed, maintained correctly, warranted correctly, and updated correctly. I think Dean took that to heart and went back and even got us more of a turnkey scenario to where for 15 years, I think this will be a complete arms-length transaction for us. But at this point, we'd like to do, we'd like for Dean to explain to you where we are process-wise, give you the numbers, and we're going to be looking at a total cost of ownership, which is both the initial bid amount and then 15 years of maintenance. And then, we'll also, when that's complete, we would like to approve the phase three of our TUSA contract, which is actually to oversee the construction for us and oversee the day-to-day implementation. Dean, with that introduction, I'll turn it over to you.
Evening, Mayor, city council members of Georgetown. Let me give you a little, just a little more history on, on the mayor's timeline he was talking about. We did release an RFP on the 11th of this year. We did mandatory pre-proposal conference and site visits on the 13th. Tracy Hoffman probably got a lot of questions after that, so we appreciate the help on that. The original RFP due date was March 14th. We had a vendor ask for an extension, and the city and the county graciously extended that to April 5th. We had three vendors respond with very good proposals at that point. AMK representing Harris Corporation, JVC Kenwood, and EF Johnson, and then Motorola Solutions. Again, they were very good proposals. They were all technically compliant, and so at that point, it came down to cost. The original cost, AMK was also the cheapest, as well as the most technically compliant. So, they obviously, by our evaluation method, scored the highest. Motorola was second, and EF Johnson was third. AMK, to build the infrastructure, came in just under 9 million dollars, where Motorola was a little over 11 million dollars, and EF Johnson was 10.7 million dollars. So, there was kind of the difference in the infrastructure. From a subscriber and system maintenance of the 15 years of turnkey that we talked about, AMK offered a three-year warranty period. Motorola and EF Johnson offered something less than that. And then, but AMK obviously was cheaper in maintenance. They were about 4.7. Motorola was almost 6 million, and EF Johnson was right at 5 million. All three vendors had recommended using a lease site that's on the north side called Frog Town at the Crown Castle. It's interesting because Crown Castle give out three different proposals to each one of them, so we've still got to negotiate that, but we'll start with what, who they gave the best one to, so. Total cost of ownership at that point was 14.1 for AMK, about 19 for Motorola because they used a lot of lease sites where AMK didn't. And then, EF Johnson was about 15.8. So, we presented this on May 23rd to the, to the city and county and the key stakeholders. We were directed by them to go into negotiations with AMK, and we did that on June 13th, and we finalized the contract on July 5th. Some, some key points in the negotiations, we added some more reliability, the infrastructure. As an example, there was only one transmit antenna. We made that two and separated out the combiners, so more technical stuff that we get into, but it alleviated a single point of failure. We've upgraded some site conditions at Sadieville and the current water tanks that the city's going to reuse that infrastructure. And then, the overall big picture of this with the AMK Harris proposal, they're building one site, a new tower at the emergency management location. Everything else is current infrastructure. Water tanks, the Sadieville tower, and then the one leased tower that's on the north side of the county. So, with that negotiation price, the infrastructure went from 8.9 to 9.4 million, still a million and a half dollars cheaper than the second guy coming in, but we added more, we added more reliability to the infrastructure to do that. Maintenance and life cycle services, the mayor talked about it, and it did, it hit home with me when I met with this organization and the county commissioners last year. You guys all talked a lot about maintenance and sustainability of the system, and we took that, we did take that to heart. No pun intended on my name, but we did take it to heart. So, we looked at a turnkey proposal. I remember one member, and I think it was you, Mr. Showalter, asked, if we have this as turnkey maintenance throughout the life cycle, can we hold the vendor accountable at year 10? And the answer was absolutely. They're going to maintain this for the city and the county, and the system should be working. Step back, we're going to accept this system in about a year, and in year 15, that system should still be working as what, the day we accepted it in year one, because we're holding the vendor responsible for all of the maintenance on everything. So, the shelters, the generators, the battery plants, the antennas, the towers that they build, all of that is their responsibility. We also added into this a portable battery replacement for public safety and the other users on this system. Typically, every two years, a portable battery is required to be replaced, and they come back to this body asking for more budget. We took that into consideration upfront. Pricing's based on today, and you're going to get that pricing through 15 years with every two years, new batteries coming into your public safety and your public service representatives. So, we took all those things into consideration in that pricing. So, what started out at about 4.7, now through a negotiated price is about 6.1 to include all services. So, 4.7 million to 6.1 million to include all services for the radio system through its life cycle.
Can I ask you a quick question?
Yes, sir.
Were all the services included in the original request?
Not, not some of the ones that we ended up adding, and if I can give you an example, you've got, we've, we've put in eight-hour battery plants at every site. So, Murphy's Law says when the generator's supposed to start, it doesn't. It gives the county and the city eight hours to respond to keep, and that site stays on the air. Normally, those batteries would be about a 10-year replacement cycle, about, close to half a million dollars. We included that in the overall contract and brought it out throughout the period to get those replaced at year 10, so they don't have to come back to you in year 10 and ask for half a million dollars on a radio system. That's one good example.
You all had meetings, I guess, with Harris and went through all these issues and got comfort. Was anybody on the council, on the committee? Nobody? That's fine.
He sat in room for about eight hours.
I'm sure. One of the, one of the numbers, though, you gave me, or gave us in regards to EF Johnson, what did you say their total price was, including service?
Their total cost of ownership was 15.8 million dollars.
I got a copy of their proposal today, and it was at 13.8.
Okay, so, when we, when we look at total price, we're looking at infrastructure, the PM and engineering services, subscribers, programming installation, the turnkey and other discounts that they gave, but we also look at their system and maintenance pricing, which was 5 million dollars, and we also look at, and their sites that they proposed as lease sites, over that 15-year period, you were looking at about 569,000 for lease costs on towers.
To the greenfield sites, is that what you're talking about?
No, I'm talking about sites that are already built, that are owned by third-party, Crown Castle, American Tower.
Right.
So, those lease costs were around 569,000 through that.
I'm, I'm just trying to be helpful, and I apologize that the mayor knows I couldn't attend the meeting that they had, or we had with the fiscal court due to, due to circumstances. But, when we got this, I guess, Friday evening, that was the first chance that I really had to take a look at. It's a pretty extensive proposal.
Yes, sir.
300 pages or so. And quite honestly, when all this was originally being discussed, I had reservations because it's such a big project, and I got on board. I got on board, and I feel confident that we do need to upgrade the system. There's no question. The mayor and I had many conversations, finance committee and, and others. One of the other questions, I guess I have, and I'm kind of jumping a little bit, and I apologize for that, but it's, it's worthwhile, is in the municipal order, it talks about 9.4 million. I guess that's for the purchase price on the front end. Is that right?
Yes, sir.
And then, the 6,122, and I guess that's the maintenance that we're talking about.
Right. Spread years four through 15.
Which is 15.6 million.
Let me get to my numbers.
Roughly 15.6 for Harris.
Right.
Okay. But the proposal that I got from EF Johnson didn't show that. It showed 13.8 million, and it was inclusive of everything when I called to confirm, and I, and I'm not an expert by any means. Did you have conversations with EF Johnson as well?
No. I, we take their proposals, and we base it on a apples-to-apples comparison. So, TUSA Consulting has submitted spreadsheets to the city and the county that gives you that detailed breakout on a, on a case-by-case basis.
Right.
And they're not at that price.
But you said you sat down with Harris, and I guess, I was wondering why you wouldn't sit down with maybe the other, the other vendors perhaps?
So, so by our valuation criteria, we, we first look at the technical proposal, and we grade that.
Yeah.
And if they are technically compliant, then we come and open the pricing, because we always take the, the standard. If, if it's not technically compliant, the price really is irrelevant.
Okay, that's fine.
So, we open up the pricing at that point, and we compare apples to apples, and we, the city and county have that spreadsheet.
Right.
And then, at that point, we grade that, and there's a, then there's a total scoring mechanism, and Harris was, Harris AMK was in first place at that point.
But the number that I've got here is different than what you're saying.
Yes, sir.
And, and I called to confirm my number, but obviously, you didn't have that opportunity, or you didn't take that opportunity.
No, I have the pricing in front of me of what they submitted for the proposal.
And I've got it here too, which I'd obviously be glad to share. So, here's my question. The 6,120, $6,122,000, how is that paid to the Harris company?
That'll be paid to AMK from years four through 15, and it'll be broke out through that time period.
Just simply divided by the number of years or the number of months?
It's, it starts out at about a half a million in year four.
Right.
And then increases through cost of living to year 10.
But the aggregate would be the 6,122.
Yes, sir. Over the, over that 11-year period. Yes, sir.
I think I saw that in there, Mayor. Correct. I don't know. You know, I'm just, I'm just giving you the information that I've obtained, and I wasn't on the committee, and I know I didn't get to, you know, attend the last meeting that the mayor said was so beneficial, but to me, these numbers are very beneficial. And as I was saying just a moment ago, this is by far, this is two times the biggest project that we've ever taken on. We took on the Pavilion, which was an 8-million-dollar project, and now we're looking at close to a 16-million-dollar project. It's worthy of, and I know you all spent countless hours, and I commend everybody that's been involved on it. And unfortunately, I didn't, like I said, I didn't get to attend some of that. I just think that a 2-million-dollar difference, based on what I'm seeing right here, this is showing that EF Johnson's almost 2 million dollars cheaper over the 15-year period than Harris. I'd like that to be confirmed with a conversation with that group. That's me personally. I'm just one individual out of eight that get to vote on this issue, but considering the magnitude, I think it's very justifiable.
So, sir, I'm going to respectfully disagree with that number, and I would encourage you guys to look at the detailed spreadsheet that shows this case-by-case.
All I'm asking is for you and others to confirm it. I'm not, I'm.
And, and I have, and will gladly, you guys have that.
Before we vote on it, I would like for you to confirm that with the group, just by a conference call or a face-to-face meeting. I think it's worthwhile. I think it's justifiable. That's not asking too much.
No.
And I'm not trying to throw a wrench in things. I'm not. I'm trying to, I mean, I know it's the last hour, but you know what? I didn't get this until late Friday evening.
Well, you've got an advantage, David. We're, we're operating with a consultant, and you're operating with a vendor, and I don't have that information.
I called the guy.
I will tell, I will tell you that EF Johnson was the one company that couldn't meet the bid deadlines.
Right.
And we got our heads together and gave them three extra weeks.
Which was great. I mean, we should do that in a situation like.
EF Johnson hasn't come to me to complain about not being the little bidder. I don't have that information.
They didn't come to me to complain either. I, I, when I saw this number Friday, Mayor, that's what triggered it. I couldn't call them Friday night. I couldn't call them Saturday night. I couldn't call them Sunday. I couldn't call them until Monday today.
So, at this point, you disagree with the consultant?
I'm asking for confirmation.
Okay.
That's it. I'm not saying he's, you know, not telling the truth by any means.
No, I don't take it as such.
My pushback is this, and it's that they're required, and we're required, to abide by what they submitted as their bid. If they called you and say, you know what, this is the price we're willing to give, we're not allowed to consider that. What we're allowed to consider is what they submitted in that sealed envelope.
Okay.
And Dean is saying, I have seen those numbers. I have gone over those numbers. Those are the numbers. the numbers.
Well, I'm just asking you to confirm it. I mean, I'm not, I don't, they didn't change, I didn't ask them to change it, I just asked them to give me the numbers.
So, Councilman, if I could share some numbers with you in here, when I make it, when I look at making the apples-to-apples comparison, the infrastructure piece alone for Harris, AMK, was 6.671056. Motorola was 9,136,436.72. And EF Johnson, just on infrastructure, was 10,137,846. So that's, that's the first piece of this.
Right, right, I don't, I don't, I mean, you're, I mean, I had 10,600,000, and I thought earlier you said 10.7 million. So we're close, that's fine.
So the second piece of this was all the subscribers, the handhelds, the mobiles, the portables. Harris was, after discounts, 3.96 million, Motorola was 1.946 million, and EF Johnson was 2.77, 2,077 million. So at this point, we're roughly just on, um, infrastructure and subscribers were about 12.2 million for EF Johnson. And then at that point, their maintenance totals for years two through 15 was 5,020,000, and they offered two other discounts, and that made their total cost of ownership for the system, not counting any lease agreements, they were 16.759 million dollars. Then with the towers that they were going to lease or use was another 569,000, making a grand total of roughly about 17.3 million.
Yeah, I don't know, and I've got, it's on the paper they sent me on their proposal, and it was, I think, you know, it was a few hundred pages as well, and they just clipped out the part that was relevant and sent it to me.
Sure.
And it shows, and I called the lady that's involved with finance, and this is what she told me.
Yep.
And all I'm asking is for you to, our group, to confirm it as a whole. Is there a sense of urgency tonight? I don't, I mean, this is huge. Huge. And I'm, I'm for it.
There is no sense of urgency, other than the urgency we felt all along with a system that can fail at virtually any time, and we're trying to get there.
I agree, I agree.
And David, I, all I know, I don't know radios, frankly.
I don't either.
So we've hired the best national consultants that we could find, and they've given us absolutely outstanding service to this point.
I don't doubt it.
And if, 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 if we don't want to go ahead at this point, then we, it's a council decision, folks, I don't make these decisions, it's up to you eight folks, do what you want to do.
Could you table it until the next meeting and then get the answers so that David's comfortable with, with the answers are, so we can understand the answers, because if there's a $2 million, if there's a $2 million saving, that pays for what's, for the part of the grant that on the bill grant that we need, so putting it off, since we have talked about it for quite some time now, maybe tabling it until next meeting and then, then pick it back up and you'll have your answers to it.
And Mayor, I didn't even have this when you and I spoke today. I mean, really, I was getting this information late in the afternoon on my way home from work. It was, you know, it's just the, the last hour. So I don't want it to look like, I'm not, we didn't get it until Friday afternoon, so.
It's three hundred pages. No, it's, it's not like a short, short, ten to three.
Could I ask where you got that information?
Um, yeah, lady's name, just from their company, Stephanie, something other.
So EF Johnson emailed that to you?
She emailed it to me. She emailed me the whole packet, she emailed me the relevant financial part, which she was very familiar with. And I spoke with her.
If we want to wait two weeks, if there's $2 million to be saved, I'll say, thank you for saving me $2 million. I'm pretty skeptical.
Yeah, and if not, then hey, at least we found out, Mayor, and we know.
If not, then you go on.
Yeah.
So you guys have a detailed spreadsheet that we took from their pricing, and I would encourage you to look at that, because that makes an apples-to-apples comparison, and, and then that allows you to make your important decisions, so I appreciate what you've got to say.
Who has a copy of the actual document? It's open in the mail.
It came through purchasing, so it'd be part of your organization.
Yeah, Tracy, you got it, I'd like that, there's.
But, but, you know, I mean, it's, it's, like the mayor kind of said, I mean, we don't understand radios and all this stuff, it's, it's very complex, and I'm not sure I could compare it. And that's why I had to make the phone call to try to understand.
I have a, I have a question to ask. If we call EF Johnson tomorrow, Dean calls EF Johnson tomorrow and says, what I told Councilman Lesby is the correct bid, Dean is going to say, can you show me in the bid where it says that? And, and my worry is, it's gonna, no matter, no matter what they say, Dean's interpretation of what their bid says is correct. Because TUSA, under the contract, ultimately has the authority to score those bids, and then it becomes a, no, this is what we meant, no, this is what you meant situation. And, and unfortunately, we can't, we can't allow that.
Oh, I mean, here's the page, so I mean, if the page looks, if this page looks like his page, then maybe he misinterpreted it.
Well, I understand that, but is it appropriate to allow a vendor to say, you misinterpreted our bid?
You say a vendor, well, what if, what if a consultant misinterpreted the bid?
I, I agree with you. All I'm saying is, who, who's right in that situation?
We have to vote on it, so we have to.
Okay, well, fair enough.
I'd like to see a copy of the actual bid.
Okay.
In fact, I mean, David brought it up now. We can set a time when we can have all of these documents available for you to go through, and would be happy to make those available to you. If we don't believe the consultant, then you're going to have to convince yourself. I can't help you on that one. If you don't want to believe the consultant we hired, you've got to help yourself, so whatever you want to do.
I'm not saying I don't believe him, I'm just asking for confirmation. We all, I think it's takes, and I just need some confirmation.
And that's fine. I, I have no problem sitting down, justifying my numbers, so. I'm pulling them straight off their numbers, so I didn't make them up, so.
I don't doubt that.
Yep.
And I have, I do, I've got trust and faith in you, I just would like to.
Not, not taking, not taking negatively, I'm, I have no problem. To me, I've worked in government for 30 years, and it's all about justifying, and that's all you guys are trying to do, so I take no issues.
Part of it is I deal with, you know, used to, Mayor, good faith estimates and financial statements and truth in lending and settlement statements all the time, and the numbers were all over the place, and you just had to kind of pull through them and try to figure them out. And this is kind of what this reminds me of. So anyway, that's it. I don't want it to be negative, maybe it's constructive.
That's your thought, that's your opinion, and you have the right to, and you put, as Secretary was saying, you put doubt in the rest of us, and we want for everybody to understand this, support it, and look at the answers.
We'll take it up, perhaps at the next meeting.
And if you need me here to go through the numbers to sit there and show you how they're derived, I will gladly take that opportunity to make them very clear.
Thank you. Mayor, I've got a question. Can you, taking that out of the equation, what we're talking about right now, once a decision is finally made, can you give us a timeframe of what we're looking at from start to finish?
So because of your current radio system and all the things we talked about, we asked the vendor to do this in a year's time. So initially, if this was approved tonight, we were looking at kicking it off July 23rd and being on the air July 23rd next year, have your public safety cut over so they could start using the new radio system.
Can I ask a follow-up question?
Yes, sir.
If this does get, let's just say, we would just be looking at it next year, two weeks down, two weeks further away.
We'd start in August instead of July. Yes, sir. One of the, one of the, one of the big challenges that we face in this is we do a coverage test that we verify, and we want it done under full foliage conditions. So that, we're right in that timeframe, going July to July or August to August. If we push it out farther than that, we start potentially compromising that coverage.
One of the problems we have, several of us aren't here. When Andrew said that the numbers that were presented in the bid, we have to accept that. So if the paper that David has doesn't match up what was presented in the bid, I say we go ahead and go with the consultant's recommendation. But I can't make that decision without seeing the bid.
And I think the best thing to do there is for us to share a link with you all that you can click on to go to the documents, because they are gigantic documents, I mean, they're, they're, some of them are 800, 800 pages.
Yeah, the technical proposal's over 1,000 pages, and then the pricing proposal is probably about 100 pages.
Well, you said that all of them were technically legitimate.
Correct.
That they all met.
Yes, sir.
So is there a bottom-line page that shows?
Well, but let me, let me add to that, so they were all technically compliant. AMK, however, in their proposal, we asked for 97% coverage throughout the city and the county. They actually came in and guaranteed 98%. So they actually exceeded the coverage expectations we asked for. And that's one of the reasons they scored higher in the technicals for than Motorola or EF Johnson. And oh, by the way, they were cheaper too, in their, in their overall price. So they wanted your business, and they priced it accordingly.
I think what we'll have Dean do is, we'll take that one section that's pricing, which I think you said's roughly 100 pages, and highlight all the, the relevant portions and then bottom-line it and show you how all the math ends up. And he's already essentially done a spreadsheet that shows that, but we'll show you the actual document and match the numbers up.
David, can you share that with them, with you, Ron?
I'll forward it to Andrew and absolutely.
That way he can, he knows what he's looking at to compare to.
See where the difference is here.
And if on the 23rd, if there's a, if there are too many council members absent, we'll just hold it over until the first meeting.
I've got one more question.
Yes, sir.
Sorry, Mayor. You just stated that AMK came, came in with a 98% coverage in the city and the county.
Correct.
We, we obviously know that there's some, some areas right now within the county that are black, that there's no coverage, or, or coverage. Where are we at right now, if you had to guess on a percentage?
Probably in the mid, mid 80s, if that high.
On the other two?
No, on your current system, your system that's here today. No, the others were compliant to what we asked for, these guys went above and beyond and guaranteed another percent. Everybody says another percent, big deal, that, that is a big deal. That is a big deal. And they, they stepped up and guaranteed that.
Who else from the 23rd is going to be here besides Jack? Marvin?
Mark.
Is Marvin in too? Is Mark?
Andrew, I just sent it to you.
Are you clear on what we're going to make available to the council, and we'll send them those links?
Yeah.
Okay. Anything else?
No, sir. I'll gladly take those documents and mark them up, so it's clear to all the members here.
And some subsequent meeting, we'll, we'll take action.
Yes, sir. Thank you.
Thank you. Hey, Mayor?
Yes, sir.
One last question. Depending on what we're going to do here with this item, I don't know how everybody else feels, I'm, I'm for calling a special call meeting next week if we can get the information as fast. The rest of the council's in agreement to that, you know, week from tonight, if possible, if that's, if that's what we decide to do here, I'd like to go ahead and.
David, there wasn't anything in that.
It's a big mistake.
In fact, if, if that's a motion, Mark, we can go ahead and ask for it.
Well, assuming.
I'm not sure we're going to be. Look, I'm comfortable tonight, it's up to you all, how much time do you want?
What about the 30th? Can we call a special call meeting on the 30th of July? Is everybody going to be here then?
No, I won't be. I can't. I won't be here on the 16th. Already. Something.
Mayor, I'm making the motion to go ahead and.
All right. What's the, the special meeting on the 16th?
I won't be here. I'll be here. So I'll be here on the 16th.
Okay. It's just me on 16th.
I mean, I completely understand the argument, it's, not the argument, the discussion. I'm okay with, I'll make the motion that we go ahead and take a vote on this tonight.
Before we do that, the only concern that I have is that you have one company that sent you that information, and that total, what about the other two companies? Were they?
Only one other.
The one that you're looking at.
No, there were three total.
Right.
Okay.
Hmm. I just have a hard time thinking that, that there's a $2 million shortage and all of that, because going in from the very beginning, when we sit there at fiscal court, they talked about the maintenance, I mean, it was a big deal, and they already said it was probably going to be about 400,000 a year to maintain it. So we knew that we were going to run into, have that, because that's the whole problem that we have with, it was a use.
When we got it.
When we got it. And it was never really professionally maintained. So in essence, he really got the cost down to like 9 million, 9.1.
Or the system.
Or the system, and then the maintenance.
Yes, the maintenance was 6 million, then over that, years four through 15.
Yeah, because you guys agreed, the other two companies didn't use it for, for three years.
Right, right.
An extra percentage.
But the other companies, I mean, it sounds like you negotiated, right? I mean, once you felt comfortable with the mayor's proposal, then you kind of negotiated some of that, so you were, you were on board.
Correct.
I mean, that can be done anybody.
So by the evaluation criteria, they scored highest in technical, they scored best in overall cost, and that's why the city and the county directed us to go into negotiations with them.
I understand. Just to get off the dime, does, does anybody have a motion they'd like to offer?
Mark made one.
Mark made a motion.
He's the second.
That we approve, the recommendation is made. Is there a second to Mark's motion?
I'm confident that the rule was what he's done through the upsets in that meeting, he seemed.
I was there.
He's knowledgeable about what he's doing, and he's negotiated, I feel like, to the benefit of the city, and is giving us the benefit he can give. Even, I feel like the, everything was compiled and it was looked at, and now here at the midnight hour, we're going to try to go through that again.
Well, we didn't get the information until Friday evening, Congress.
Right.
Friday evening, I mean, I, who could I get a hold of until today? I mean, this is a big number, $2 million is a lot of money. If that's right, I don't know that it's right, that's all I'm asking.
We actually, we actually reported the 8.9 million dollar figure to you 60, 45 days ago.
I understand.
And indicated that we authorized them to negotiate with the low bidder.
Right.
We didn't ask them to go negotiate with the second and third place bidder.
I don't know about that. I mean, I do know, you called me, you were excited, Mayor, you said it's, come in at whatever, $9 million. You said it's come in at whatever, nine million dollars.
Yeah.
And then I see six million Friday and I'm thinking, whoa. Now it's fifteen point seven million. Oh, we got it. We added up. That's, you know, I knew there was maintenance. Didn't know exactly how much it's going to be.
I used, I used the number four hundred and eighty-seven thousand dollars a year.
Okay.
So the math on that's pretty simple to do. It's in the four to six million dollar range. I, I don't know how this hadn't been, I don't see why any of this has surprised you based on things you were told in these meetings.
Well, it doesn't matter if I was surprised or not. This is information, it's relevant. And if a council member feels that way and enough of us feel that way on the biggest project we've ever taken on, if anybody wants to challenge me on it, that's fine. I don't care. I'm doing what I think is in the best interest of this community, the city and the county.
I agree.
So I don't, I don't want to be questioned or challenged as if I didn't do something right either, Mayor. Because I did. I'm, I'm fine with where I'm, what I'm presenting tonight, I'm fine with it. Perfectly.
Andrew, you, do you acknowledge that we have a motion and a second?
I understand Ms. Walter made a motion, Ms. Tackett made a second. I totally understand. Don't agree with it, but I, I understand.
And now there's an opportunity to discuss that motion, huh?
I don't see how anyone on the council, if another councillor brings up an issue of this magnitude with this concern, could move forward tonight. Voting in favor.
Without some type of explanation?
Yeah. How? Explain that to me. I'm confident in him too. I'm confident in him. I just, I'm just asking for clarification. That's reasonable.
I, I agree with you. There is, Dean prepared for the council's benefit, a contract negotiations report. And there's one page on it, which actually I printed the other day, I forgot to bring it down, but I can put this PDF up on that screen. And it lists every single bid from every single vendor, infrastructure, engineering, subscribers, installation, and then all the discounts and then what they each listed for maintenance. Now, the only thing I can't give you is here's their actual physical bid that they did. We probably have that. But what I'm, what I'm getting at is, and we can call EFJ all we want, unless there's a mistake in this math, these are the numbers. I mean, I think the best that we can do is to take what's in this spreadsheet, which has exactly the numbers that Dean listed, fourteen one, nineteen million, fifteen eight, and compare them to what's in that bid. All I'm saying is unless there's a discrepancy between what's in there and what's in those bids, that's what you're dealing with. I'm just offering that up for the council's benefit.
Any information you have?
Me too.
Why don't we do this? Why don't we move on from that agenda item temporarily? We'll go and get those actual bids and we'll show you where on those bids they match up to this cost summary.
Sounds good.
I have, I have to advise this council against any notion of reaching out to a vendor and saying, hey, are you sure the information we have in your bid is correct? That is not proper. I'll just, I have to say, it is, it is out of the ordinary, it is irregular. What they submit on paper is what they are bound to.
Got to get it.
To, what we need is the actual bids. And I'm not sure you have those. I think Tracy's the other one that may have those, but.
Do you have a printout of what?
I only printed a few pages just because it was literally three hundred pages.
Do you have the page with the third?
I got the page. I got three relevant pages. And like you asked for, a summary page or a final page that showed the total.
Would, would you look at that?
Sure, absolutely.
Let Dean pull that explanation.
Ma'am?
I don't care.
Next one, James.
Yes, it is.
You're ready.
I'm ready as I'm ever going to be. This is, this is, this is Lenny Flitz's. Here's your summary sheet if you'd like to reference it yourself.
I think it'd be a great, if we could take a five minute recess, man, there could be a trip to the men's room.
Might be a little long. Might be a little long if you want to be.
We'll take just a break while they're getting all this information. Andrew?
Yep. It's all been around. Let's see what you got. We don't need to be here.
This is my, you know, this is my year. I remember proper.
Better scratch.
Oh, no.
I gotta put on my glasses to see it there and take them off to see it here. How's that?
Yeah, I can see it.
But somebody will tell me.
EMA is the first thing on this infrastructure.
Yes, sir. All right, so here is our site by site, line item by line item comparison across the three vendors. So you see the different sites, you see the different pricing. There is your infrastructure price based on the discounts that each vendor gave. So the next line item that came into this was all the subscribers. And here was the different subscribers and the accounts for each agency within the city and the county. Police, fires, sheriffs, EMS, non-public safety, line item by line item, and their respective discounts. So there you see what the subscriber pricing was. So then we get into maintenance, and here's the discrepancy, councilman. This is the infrastructure maintenance on these three, here's two through five, six through 10, 11 through 15. In our RFP, we required them to give us subscriber, call it long-term warranty cost for all the subscribers you saw above. And Harris did that, AMK, Motorola did that. And these guys did not provide this in their pricing. However, in their cost model they gave us, and when I click on this, you'll see at the top, this is all your subscribers, and they told us it was $175 a year per subscriber for that extended warranty maintenance. So we added that in there times five, so we totaled up the number of subscribers, took it times $175 each, times five years. If they would have provided this pricing as they were supposed to in their RFP, it would have been $651,000 a year, or excuse me, $650,000 for five years, years six through 10, 11 through 15. So there's 1.3 million that they didn't account for in the spreadsheets that they gave to you.
Why would that cost be four times higher for them than it would be for either one of the other two?
That's, I'm going on-
But you never got their number either.
Right, I'm going off their pricing.
Well, but you never got their number.
I think it's fair to say that either their response was technically not compliant, or this is the number that we were given. Am I mistaken?
So they've got a price in there per radio for extended warranty, they only go up to five, they go up to five years on it, and they say it's $175.
Correct.
And so based on that, I take it times the number of subscribers, times $175 a year, times five years to come up with that price. So I guess technically I could have sit there and said, city, county, they're not compliant to this bid, and I could throw them out, or I can sit here and come up with a price based on one of their price sheets to give you what it would have cost if they would have priced it out as they were supposed to. And then the last piece of this, sir, is they did not also account for the lease cost for the 1 to 15. They give us the pricing, but they didn't give that in the overall cost of ownership, and that's, we include that in the overall cost of ownership.
What do you mean by the lease pricing? What do you mean by the 560?
So let me show you this, let me blow it up here so everybody can see it. So one of our requirements in the bid was if they used a leased site, they had to identify what that leased site was going to cost, and they had to get a letter from them. So here you see I've got Harris, who got a price from Crown Castle, Motorola got a price from Crown Castle, as well as three other sites, that's why they were expensive, they were using a lot of leased sites. And EF Johnson got a price from Crown Castle. So based on the prices that they individually got from that vendor, I took that price and applied the escalation that Crown Castle described, and I come up with a 15-year lease cost if you use that site.
But here's, I guess my question is, the 13.8 million that's on here, I know it included the lease cost for the sites. I know it did.
And I will show you that one of the things that we did, so we would break this out into an apples-to-apples comparison. Here's a note where we said we subtracted the site leasing cost. So we would make an apples-to-apples comparison between the sites for the vendors. So I agree with you, it didn't include it, and we subtracted it from that price to reflect that.
So why would there be different numbers then? I mean, why is this number seven? I'm just asking, why is this 700,000, the other was 600,000?
What was 600,000?
Or whatever you had, the lease price.
So this is the price for the equipment to go in the site.
Well, I thought that was the price to lease the space to put the tower.
That was the number down here.
Right.
That was this price.
No, but I thought you just said you backed that number out.
I did, so that 700,000 is the cost for the equipment at that site, and if you see all of their sites around the $700,000 range for their equipment, and then this is the services for PM engineering installation to put that equipment in.
Seems expensive for a new site.
That's the RF equipment, the microwave equipment, and the batteries.
So like on Frog Town, I'm looking at 644,000, does that match what you have for Frog Town?
Highlighted here, yes, sir. Right here's the line, 644,155 is your services, 721,000 is your equipment, and it said we pulled the lease cost out of that.
When you say equipment, what do you mean?
That's your radio equipment, that's your base station repeaters, that's your microwave connectivity, that's your battery plants, that's all the, it's all that technical equipment that will go inside the shelter.
I guess the Lancaster Water Tower, that's the 726?
Yeah, that's the 460 Water Tower that they're calling Lancaster Water Tower.
So where is the 13826? Help me understand.
Yeah, so if I, so I'm going to highlight this number, that's their infrastructure, and I'm going to highlight, I'm going to do a control and highlight this. At this point, I'm at 12,215 for the infrastructure and the subscribers. And then I'm going to, there's the maintenance, and then I'll put in these final two discounts. And that's coming at, including that 651,000, that's 15,305. So if I, that's 1 point, that's 1.3 million right there, so I'm down to 14 off those two numbers alone in their price. And then I, then I add in the, or take out the 569,000. I guess, I say this, I should have declared them non-compliant in the pricing, but no good deed goes unpunished, so, you know, here's where we're at because of that. You're on board with the numbers they got, but they didn't give you, they didn't give you these extra numbers, sir.
You know, I don't know, it's above my skill level, I guess, and, you know, I understand what you're saying, and I can't confirm or deny it, you know, all I can do is based on what you're telling me. You know, I would guess that the other two vendors, maybe they weren't 100% either, maybe they missed something, they could have been thrown out of the equation, so, who knows?
They, however, they didn't, they did comply to those six through 10 and 11 through 15 costs, and they give line item costs in their pricing. That's, that's why we made the note here, did not provide, use the extra five-year warranty to come up with these numbers.
David, you did what you had to do.
Yeah, man. If I was a hunter, I'd say the same stuff, I would ask the same questions. I think we've got an explanation for it, that the numbers you got were the same numbers they provided in the bid.
They just left out.
They didn't include all the costs that were supposed to be in there.
That's, that's the reasoning behind it, sir.
Well, hey, I hope that's the case, I'm going to assume that it is.
Any other questions for Dean?
No, most of them.
Got a motion on the second. Yeah, why don't we do this real fast?
Mr. Bradley?
Yes.
Mrs. Butcher-Cromway?
Yes.
Mrs. Singer-Urdley? Mr. Lesby?
Yes, I support the project, all the effort that's gone, and I appreciate all those that have been involved.
Mr. Showalter?
Yes.
Mrs. Tingle-Sames?
Yes.
Mr. Tac, Mrs. Tackett?
Yes, yes.
Mr. Ennis?
Mr. Thompson.
Yes.
I know, right?
Thank you. Well, now the meeting gets more difficult.
Really? 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 I just thought of the stage for you.
Well, I'm going to compliment David, I mean, that's a big difference when you see certain things, it was a, you know, but we get the explanation and we're fine with it.
Appreciate that.
Took a little longer to do, but that's okay.
We appreciate you.
And I'd like to ask from there, if in the future we get a packet that's 300 pages, to get it to us earlier so that David had questions, maybe they didn't have to look out here, he would have had time to come to you or come and talk about it, and get those questions answered before we get in. Because 300 pages, it's too much, I don't even read a novel, 300 pages in a whiskey and a lollipop. That's just this technical stuff.
And we understand that completely. I hope that council will understand that. For about the last two weeks, we have either worked on a build grant on the South sewer line, or on this issue, all day, every day.
And I understand-
I was amazed that we could get that packet even ready for this meeting by Friday.
I understand that, because I've been in your situation with getting that packet ready, but it is, it is to the council, because they do, as you said earlier, have to make the decisions on it, and then we have to live with those decisions and tell our constituents why we voted the way we voted, because the vote falls on us. So we really need to get this material either earlier, or if it's that much pressure, because it is a lot of pressure to get the packet together, then don't push it and wait a couple more weeks so that we have time to review what we're voting on, like the healthcare business in Washington, we voted on it, but we didn't know what we voted on. And I don't want to tell my constituents, I was in a hurry to have to vote on something, and I really didn't know what I was voting on.
Or you could have been in Kentucky and voted on comprehensive tax reform without knowing what was going on.
And those are the issues.
Just a couple months ago. We also just, we'll do better, we will try to do better.
Thank you.
But I will tell you this, that many of the things that we have brought to you tonight are time-sensitive, and we have had to work to meet deadlines. Now, I'm happy to give up some of these projects and quit being so aggressive, but literally, we've got a rather busy July, and I'm really proud of what we're bringing in July, and your point's well taken, we'll do our best to do that. your point's well taken, and we'll do our best to do that. Oh, E?
Phase three.
Okay.
You said it was going to be done.
Yeah. Item three, item E on your agenda is a municipal order approving phase three of our TUSA consultants. We don't think we have the expertise to oversee this project on a daily basis. And you have a municipal order, I think, or a resolution, municipal order approving the third phase of the TUSA contract at a total cost of $208,279. It is the recommendation of the Radio Committee, City Attorney, and myself that we use these consultants throughout the completion of the process.
I make a motion now.
I'll second it, Mayor.
Thank you. Motion's been made and seconded. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. Item F on your agenda is a update on the Georgetown Mobile Estates Sewer Infrastructure Project. And we do have a brief PowerPoint presentation to kind of summarize this project and then talk with you about next steps that we think are appropriate for this project. Let me first say that I had the, Andrew and I had the opportunity this afternoon to meet with the Water Board at 4:00, at which time we walked through the similar presentation to what you all will see. And when Chase comes to the podium later, he can let you know that the Water Board voted unanimously to recommend to the council that we make the loan application. You are not going to be asked tonight to approve accepting a loan. We do want to ask you to authorize our submittal of the loan, and it will come back to you later to determine if you really want to accept it. So that little clarity upfront is important, that you're not being asked to make a final decision tonight. Also wanted to say that we've had a long and rough history with this project over the last three years. And in this last three years, we've all lived through a bunch of headlines about the park, and our frustration from time to time about being able to meet with the owners and get to the real core of the matter. I do want the council to know that once we resolve those issues, and we began discussion with the right representatives of the owners, that they have been very cooperative. So our early difficulties were just because I don't think we had identified the players. They hadn't identified who we were. But since all that's been straightened out, we've had very cooperative conversations. I characterize all of our negotiations and discussions as robust and blunt, which is the way they're supposed to be. We've asked all the hard questions of each other. And when I reported to the Water Board, I talked a lot about how complicated this thing was going to be. And I think what I was referring to is the process that we've been through in getting to this point. And it's been very complicated. We've gone down more false paths and tried different solutions, as we learned each from the other what the owners' capabilities are and what the city's capabilities are, what we're willing to do, and what GMWSS is willing to do. So that's kind of come together into what we're going to present to you tonight. Just real quickly, for background, there you go. Georgetown Mobile Estates, of course, is the former Ponderosa and Spindletop. It contains about 500 lots. There are about 350 of which are fully developed now. I believe the total population that's in the park now is about 285. But they are platted and have been for years, as a matter of record, for 500 units. And that's the number we're working toward. And we know that in 2016, it ownership passed from the Sextons to a Wall Street Investment Trust. We've got environmental hazards, and we know from the recent tests done by Third Rock Consultants that we have empirical data to show that the quality of the streams around the trailer park are consistent with untreated human waste. And it DNA testing has confirmed that this is human waste, not cattle waste. You'll see on the next slide, this is just a map representing the Kane Run Basin, the Kane Run watershed. And I wanted you just to see that it runs all the way over into Fayette County. This particular point that we're concerned with is the red circle, number six. If you'll flip to the next page, this table is a little hard to read. We'll send you this entire PowerPoint by email. When you reference six, there are grades given by color. Testing place six gets an F in the grade for swimming, a D grade in fishing, a C, conductivity is C, ammonia is an F, nitrogen is an F, and phosphorus is an F. It's a pretty bad place. The next slide actually begins to show you from the Third Rock test data where the real hot points in the Kane Run Basin are. You can see Fayette County had a real severe one that is identified with human waste, and they've had an ongoing series of projects to address that in that part of Fayette County. On further down is the large one that we're trying to deal with, with this trailer park situation. And it, again, is indicated as a human waste. Three issues. The failing package plants. It's been treated forever by two package treatment plants that are permitted and ultimately discharged into a subsidiary of Kane Run. Both package plants have been in and out of failure for a decade. There's been more than 100 notice violations from the Division of Water. Now, all of the sewage out there is flowing through one of the package plants. One's been taken completely offline, and the entire flow is being routed through one. Frankly, the Division of Water has been unwilling to enforce these provisions for years. I will say that in the owner's defense, that since they took over, Gene, they've done better maintenance of the package facilities, and their test results have improved. It's not a solution, but we do want to acknowledge that they're working toward making this a little bit better. The other issue is a completely failing collection system within the park itself. It has to be completely replaced. The lines run underneath trailers and in backyards. They don't run like traditional sewer lines should run. So we envision this collection system being completely replaced to stop the infiltration. And the overflows, frankly, if we don't fix the overflows, we can't hook it onto our sewer system.
Right.
It just, it won't work with the 6 to 1 infiltration rate. The third issue is the aid service tap-ons. If you drive around the park, look very closely, you maybe see dripping. They're just old. Many of the trailers are so old, the plastic fittings that they would have gone to are harmed. So there's a full part of this to take care of the aging tap-on fees. And that's a part of the grant that you all have asked, have authorized to go after. We think the solution is pretty straightforward. It's been complicated to get to the solution, but once we get here, it's pretty straightforward. The Kentucky Infrastructure Authority helped us conceive of this project, or evaluate this project in a different way. We had been looking at it as two separate, completely separate projects. We had to run a pipeline, then we had to re-sew the collection system inside the park. And we were looking at different funding sources, and how do you match those up? Kentucky Infrastructure Authority said this, it can be real simple. Just combine the projects and call it one large project. So our solution is, there's a public part to it, and then there's a private part to it. Taking KIA's suggestion, we started looking at this as one design problem and one construction issue. And that is all of the 500 lots being re-sewered within the trailer parks and our pipeline as one big project. Then it's, it's new from the source all the way to where we need to treat it. What will be the private part of the project is the owners of the park will have to take offline and disassemble the existing package plants. We're not in the business of doing that, and we don't want to be. So what this budget will look like, what this cost will look like to implement this solution, the design and construction of the sewer extension and possibly a pump station, with Chase's fresh eyes and a fresh engineering look, we're going to start from scratch on engineering considerations, and it may be that we can gravity flow this line. Obviously, then we save money on both construction and long-term maintenance. But we'll see. We've estimated $4 million for the pipeline, 1.9 million and 15,000 for the design and construction of the new collection system, the new tap-on connections, $750,000, for a total project cost of $6,665,000. The way we propose getting that project done is, we're familiar with the KIA grant of That was, actually, you'll recall, that was, the General Assembly awarded that to the Scott County Fiscal Court for the reservoir project. When the reservoir project couldn't happen in 2013, the General Assembly recommitted these funds to Georgetown for the South Sewer Line project. Those funds are at risk still. We've activated the grant, we've made a small draw on the grant, but we've also gotten emails from the Director of KIA letting us know that the funds are subject to being swept. I've talked to Senator Thayer three times over the last couple of days, and he is actively working with State Budget Director to try and stop that from happening. That piece is foundational to what we do. You're aware that Lexington has committed $475,000. You have approved us to apply for $750,000, 319 grant, and the water company will help us with the 40% match requirement on that by waiving tap-on fees, so we don't have additional cash outflow for that match. The city and the county have already budgeted $250,000 apiece, and that leaves of the total project $3,865,000 that we are, want to talk to you about applying for a KIA loan in that If we switch on over, what we know about Kentucky Infrastructure Authority loans, they created this loan fund for projects just like this one. And it is key on this, for the council's understanding, is that City of Georgetown will be the borrower, not GMWSS. KIA only loans to local government. When we did our pre-application, this project ranked ninth out of 124 projects statewide. The eight projects ranked ahead of us are already existing projects that are getting additional funding. This is the highest-ranking new project in the state. They really want to see this done. We've shown you what the standard loan terms are, but we're going to focus on low-income qualified terms if we can meet low to moderate income standards within the park itself. That is key, because that will allow us to obtain a 30-year loan at only one-half a percent interest rate.
How many years, Mayor?
30 years at a half percent interest rate. And their paperwork shows the potential of up to $1.3 million in principal forgiveness. We already know that the principal forgiveness part of this has been oversubscribed. We're not going to be eligible for the full 1.3, but we do think we'll be eligible for some principal reduction as we go through. We just can't say exactly what it is. To get the low-interest loan rate, we cannot depend on census tracts because the general wealth in that area is too high. So the only way we can meet the threshold of low to moderate income is by doing a door-to-door survey of residents within the park. And we know that's a very high bar for us to get over. There's a lot of mistrust within that trailer park, particularly of authority figures. So anticipating that, we have, late last week, we met with the leadership of Scott County Immigrant Initiative, who have done a bunch of work out in the park and organized soccer leagues and cookouts. Gene's worked with them. Gene's actually going with them to a church service tomorrow night at the church out there by the park. We're going to start this process, but we're going to have community representatives trying to get that done for us. The reason we're bringing all this to you, again, is our loan application due date is August the 6th. And we know we only have one more chance at you after tonight. Going on to the next page you need to know about, all of this will be governed by a user agreement that we're in the process of developing between the owners of the park and GMWSS. And that user agreement will set out all of the relationship between these two parties. The key thing that we've insisted on from the beginning is we'll have one customer, not four or 500 customers.
Yeah.
So, and that's been agreed with at this point. That single ratepayer is going to need to pay the monthly sewage fee, which will be outlined by the user agreement, and the monthly loan repayment. We have insisted that the city's protection, since we can't take a mortgage legally, we think a stronger tool for us to use in this application is a first assignment of rents. The property is all about cash flow. That's, the value of the property is its cash flow. And we intend for the city to have a first assignment of rents to protect us. Going one step further, and I'll credit Andrew with this idea, I figure we might as well ask for as firm a terms as we possibly can. We've also asked that the owners agree to appoint a third-party administrator to collect the rent. The third-party administrator pay us first, and then give the owner the balance of the proceeds.
So the 3.8 loan is going to be paid for by the owners of the trailer park?
That's correct.
Okay.
That's what we worried about before, remember?
Yeah.
And we think our protection is the first assignment of rents and some structure. We wrote into the agreement that we would require a third, an independent third-party administrator to collect rent, assuming that they would immediately strike it.
They would immediately what? I'm sorry?
Turn it down.
But they did strike it.
We've gone back and forth for several iterations, and our attorney brought their attention to it, and they have not pushed back yet. I think, Roy, I think that makes our position very strong in terms of guaranteeing our debt service. The user agreement would be binding on anybody that bought the park afterwards. All of this obligation follows the park. What we've worked through so far, we're memorialized in a letter of intent that will go into a user agreement eventually. a user agreement eventually.
If it was due for whatever purpose, they couldn't pay back the loan, then what avenue do we have to recourse? Is that your next page?
No, no, we, that, that is the first, that's the assignment of rents. If they don't pay, we, if a third-party administrator collects the rent and gives us our money first, the only way they don't pay is a front end.
Well, I was going to say, say the park went belly up and cleared everybody out and there's no park there again, then do we have, do we have access to the land to pay for that or what do we have?
We've got a first assignment of rent, that's all we've got.
Is there nothing else to put in there for a second layer of protection?
We legally-
Because that's, that's a pretty good one. So, but is there a second layer?
I can't imagine a stronger one. The only other thing begins to involve mortgages, which we can't do constitutionally.
One thing about that, park's been there for years, for years. And I don't think it's going nowhere.
Well, the park got in trouble at one point because, at least anecdotally, what we think is that so much cash walked out and was never accounted for. It occurred to me, if, if we all agree to a third-party administrator to collect rent, the days of cash walking out of that office are over.
Yep. It hadn't bellied up to this part.
Which is a positive that cash can't walk out of that place the way it has in the Something we've all talked about from the beginning of this is we know that when we start talking about running a sewer line to the south, we have concerns about development.
Yep.
And we have a long-held community value of preserving our green belt and we do not intend to give that up in this process. There are a number of steps we can take to try to protect ourselves from that happening. And I think the most important conversations we have as we actually operationalize this is the capacity questions about the size of the lines. To meet the LMI requirements, we have to be very careful and only, only do our door-to-door survey of people in the park on this line. It's essential that we hit that LMI threshold. At a later point, after we get the loan stuff straightened out, there may be other folks that the council decides should have access to this line. And we'll make these decisions way in advance. This is not going to be a guessing game. I think we'll decide how to protect the green belt of existing properties, who do we pick up and who do we not? And how we size this line. The Division of Water has given me a little bit of pushback saying that, well, Mayor, we may not let you put that small of a line in. If you're going to open the ditch, we may ask you to put a bigger line in. And I told them we just wouldn't do the project if they made us do that. Now, that's probably not a good option for us, but we feel very strongly.
That was your bluff, Mayor.
That was my bluff. But Andrew is listed out. We can control tap-ons through ordinance, limiting availability. I think we can have a reasonable conversation among the council about how to get this environmental problem solved and not wreck our plan for the future of Scott County. So I just wanted you all to know that this isn't our thinking and we're aware that we have to do this very carefully.
Well, that was some of the concerns a lot of people had running a line that way, that we would open that whole area up. And that's not our intentions at all.
It's not.
That was, that was the biggest concern a lot of people had. Our, our concern was fixing the trailer park and that was it.
And we think we can walk that tightrope with the council's help. And then considerations for approval. KIA requires the city to authorize the application through a resolution. So you all get to decide if we apply or not. Importantly, the city's not bound to accept the funds after the application. There's a lot of stuff, we've got all the bare bones, the big bones figured out. There are a few details that are still yet to be figured out for the user agreement.
The point of that is that there's a lot of places where it can still fall through. If, if, you know, if we don't get the low income or like you were saying, if the project comes in over budget, that, the point of that line is to say that there's still plenty of opportunities for it to not work out, but there will be a later time when that decision can be made. At this point, all we're asking is to move on.
Yeah, and this, there are many points of failure between here and the finish line. But this was our best concept to look at this as one large project, fix it correctly and do so with as little risk to the city as we possibly could. Now, I'd, I'd built this up to be more complicated than it really is just because our process was so darn hard. I will do council's wishes here. After we talked with, after I met with the Water Board Chair and Chase on Friday and we walked through this and realized that it was a deceptively simple concept at its essence, then we met with the Water Board today for an hour and we answered a bunch of their questions and a bunch of Bruce's questions. The Water Board went ahead and voted that they thought we should apply. Council has the option of either approving a resolution and asking us to apply for the loan, knowing that we have more details to work out and we bring back the actual loan acceptance to you tonight. We have a resolution, we can do that. Or we can do as we indicated we would and give you a week to ponder this application and call a special meeting.
Mayor, personally-
I'm ready for it.
Yeah, I'm, I'm good with the, the plan, the, the project. I do have a couple of quick questions and one, one relates to the, the assignment of rents. If they've got financing on it, there may be a good chance that that lender has got an assignment of rents ahead of us. Andrew, you shaking your head, you know otherwise?
It's not mortgaged. They, they were the mortgage holder and they ended up owning it.
Okay.
So there is no, there is no mortgage that we-
That's our understanding. We, we will verify that, but-
Okay. And then could we, or should we request that they not be able to obtain any additional financing behind us? I mean, I know we don't have a mortgage on it, but would that be something worth asking?
We can ask. I think that's the, that's the good news is that we can ask for additional things. We can't ask for a mortgage, just can't do it. But we can ask that they, you know, agree not to seek another mortgage. And we could also ask for a bond. I think it's highly unlikely that they would give us both a bond and a first assignment of rents. But we can, we can always ask. This is, the letter of intent is the, the bare bones argument that we have sketched out as the parties believe are the things necessary to move forward. All the assurances they feel they need and all the assurances we feel we need. And it's a non-binding letter of intent.
Right, right.
But it's us saying, we agree in principle on what this must look like.
Okay.
There's other opportunities for other concessions.
And we're to the point where we're comfortable almost asking anything.
Well, one other thought was, you know, when we do this, assuming this all goes through, the value's going to go up significantly. What if it goes up, they sell it? Can we request early payoff of this debt, of this loan and maybe even tap into some of the, the additional equity that's going to happen because of-
That's another good ask, yeah, absolutely.
Yeah, can we do that, require them that if they sell it, that they have to pay that note off first or in?
The value's going to be a whole lot more for the sewer line up there.
The other thought was, can we charge a little bit of a premium on that interest rate? I mean, obviously a half percent is nothing and spend it out over 30 years. I mean, we're kind of tying up our credit, which is, you know, I mean, we know, I know we've got quite a bit of credit, but we're still tying up 3.8 million dollars of our credit. I almost feel like maybe there ought to be a cost associated with that. We're borrowing money on their behalf. I'm just asking, why not ask?
Yeah, absolutely.
And they're getting a heck of a rate.
I mean, really, their payment would be $11,500 a month based on these terms right now. You take it up to 2% or 3%, there's really, I mean, there's a little bit of a difference.
Now, we've run the numbers on the, the conventional loans, this thing, somewhere back here it showed if you don't get the LMI, the interest rates on these loans are 2% to 3%. We've run the numbers and they can't, they will not work without the low-interest loan. This, the, the problem the owners are going to have, and it's their problem, but they've got to pay for all of this monthly, both the operation and, and the debt service. They're probably going to have to, right now, most of those lots out there are rent inclusive of utilities. So they're going to have to raise their rent. But they, they have acknowledged openly to us on the phone that they know that they cannot do all of this on the backs of the residents. They'll price them out. They simply cannot do that. So the owners are aware that they're going to have to find some balance between paying for these necessary utility upgrades and how much of the rent they get to keep for their own purposes. Because they, they probably can't take all of this bill and add it to a resident. If we lose the low-interest loan or we start adding premiums to that, these numbers simply break down. When, when I mentioned it first, that part of the work we've been doing is trying to get a good understanding of everything we could do and everything they could possibly do.
Yeah.
And you get to a point where, okay, we've all said that's all we can do. We know that, that increasing the interest rate up to two or something like that kills this deal.
Okay.
But we can ask about all of this other stuff.
Well, the value's got to go up. And I don't know what the value is today, but you, you solve this problem and you're-
It comes market, for sure.
There was somewhere on, on the slide, and I missed it, you said 300, how many units they have now? Can they expand units?
They, they can. They are planted for 500. They cannot expand past 500.
So they've got, so they're going to be able to almost double, they're almost going to be able to double what they've got when they get this project, this problem fixed. There shouldn't be a reason why they can't double what they've got out there. So would that not double the value right there?
All these are probably right. I'm just bringing you the proposal. All of those might be eventualities.
Also, David, to go, I mean, you, I think you're right when you figure the debt service, it's like $11,000 a month, but I think there's another almost 11 in what would be sewer usage fee per month. I think they, they took their standard, what they know, you know, a residence generates, multiply it by 500 and I think it comes out.
And that's fine. Keep their cash flow fine.
Right.
But if they sell it and they get a premium, it'd be nice for us to be able to get a piece of that.
And as they expand, we should, as they're expanding, then that amount could go up as, based on their expansion.
Yeah.
Because they're going to be able to double what they've got out there.
I would hesitate to call it expansion because they're, I mean, they've historically had 500 lots.
But it's not been used.
It just hasn't been used.
Right.
And the reason it hasn't been used is because Division of Water said, anytime you take a builder out, don't plan on putting one back.
Okay, and so we're fixing the problem for what's kept them from this amount of income. So we're fixing that problem to let-
But we're going to run-
Actually, we're a vehicle that they can't get the loan from KIA. We can.
Nobody can.
They're going to pay for it.
This is huge.
They're, yeah, I, if they, if, it will surprise me if they want to give us part of their future profit.
At least a payoff. That seems reasonable.
And, and they, and they might, took, David and I talked earlier, I can't imagine unless somebody had to, why would somebody pay off a half percent loan?
What if they sold it? That's my only thought.
And they may have to.
Yeah.
Unless all the terms of this follow the property, that'd be a pretty, I would think the loan in place would be pretty attractive. But I don't know. Roy, did you have a comment? You've been on this project for a long time.
She's on that, Mayor.
Roy is the star of this whole project.
That's true. I think back 2005 or '06, I was praising Grace Christian Church and I saw the black water in the creek.
Yeah.
I started asking questions and that's what led us up. Mayor, you've done an excellent job of summarizing things. A couple of things that I thought of going back to the resolution the city passed years ago.
Yeah.
Martin, you were there and they were there. Doubling the size of trailer park troubles me. And the way that resolution was written, if my memory's right, we had some limits on there. We weren't going to allow enough sewer to be sized to where they could double it. And so it would have, doubling would have to be approved through the Health Department, through planning and zoning and stuff. So we've got some tools by which we can restrict it. Yes, it was approved by Platte years ago for 500 mobile homes. But there's hoops that we can put in place to keep them from doubling that. Think about it, 250 more mobile homes with two kids in them? What's that do to schools, just for example?
Well, see, but I'm kind of concerned like you are. I don't think you, I, not if, I, let people do what they want to do to make their money, but I'm not a big fan of trailers for reasons such as yours thing too. But once we fix the problem, I don't know what the Health Department's going to say, no, you can't, for what reason? And I don't know what Planning and Zoning's going to say, no, you can't, for what reason?
There's no problem up there right now to stop them. That would be the issue.
Go, go back to the resolution that was passed back in 2006, or it really did have-
2006, I don't remember when we did it.
But another, a couple of things I want to mention. We keep talking about the trailer park. Let's define trailer park. Sam's Truck Stop is on a septic system and it's had a history of problems. It's not been talked about publicly, but that needs to be tied in. That's an existing use out there. Maple Grove subdivision. Guess what? It's across the county line. The sewer runs downhill regardless of where the political boundaries are. Red State BBQ. Go out there and look in their back door. I've seen it. Trust me. That needs to be collected in this system as well. That's existing. It's coming down, can't run a creek. And so we need to be careful about just saying the trailer park, Jimmy Dwyer's trailer park. That's a different animal, but it's tied into this. So those are details that got to be worked out.
Well, there are details, Roy, most of which have been discussed. We, we know that Jimmy Dwyer owns property that the infrastructure of the trailer park sewage system is on.
Yep.
We know Jimmy's trailers are going to be picked up. We know that if we're going to be out there at Sam's, we'll probably go under the road. However, we're not going to do this while we're establishing low to moderate income. We're going to focus on the price and how we can get to there. We have revisited the issue of Maple Grove Trailer Park and we don't have any intention of going that far into Fayette County. We can't do it, Roy. We can, we can pick up this trailer park that's parked in Fayette County. But this project does not work and we cannot afford it if we go that far into Fayette County. That's going to have to be Fayette County's-
Well, I'm not suggesting we pay for it, but if Fayette-
And it could come down in tax to us maybe if they wanted to.
But there you go. That balance can act on capacity.
Right, right.
Lines.
Where Fayette County's involvement in sizing that line, forget the green belt, they'll blow it up. I'm not interested in going to Maple Grove. I don't think our project goes that far.
Go out there and look at that creek before you make firm.
I understand, Roy, I'm trying to do the art of the possible. And I can kill it by reaching too far. I think I've reached, I'm about ready to fall over the edge of the cliff now, I've reached so far.
It's about-
And I, I'm not going that far.
I appreciate your efforts. I mean, it's like we're getting close. One, one last thing I'll tell you, and this is the appraiser in me. Yes, that's going to increase value out there, but I would think that by having the, the monies coming to pay the loan off first is essentially a lien, first lien that's going to be in front of any other liens that come along. If David Lesby comes along wanting to make a loan from Whiter Bank on there, he's going to be behind that lien. And so the first thing they're going to want to do, be my guess, is Whiter Bank wants to see that loan paid off because they want to be the first lien holder. So I would suspect it'd probably take care of itself.
Good.
Hopefully.
Thank you.
Mayor, a thought on that line, I'm just sitting here thinking about it and Jean could probably answer this question or, but if, if we put the line in to satisfy the state, could we not put the pumps in to, to satisfy the issue with the flow? Or I guess the water company can answer that too. Could we not downsize the pumps and the pump stations?
We can size the infrastructure for whatever, whatever properties we want to service. And that's just a question we have to answer.
So I guess what I'm kind of getting at is if the state made an issue out of that sewer line not being large enough, could we not put the line in the ground to accommodate who knows what happens in the future more? But put pump stations in or put some kind of a choking device in to where we had the control? You know, that, there's a stretch of line that'd have to be replaced- of line that'd have to be replaced. It's 50 feet long before that additional capacity could be received.
David, I think one of the issues with the Division of Water and size of lines is due to the amount of water flow into the current sewers at this point in time. As the mayor said, big rain event, it's pushing six times what the plan will handle. So, by putting all new lines in, you know, just like putting four new cars on a, on a, four new tires on a car versus two, if we put everything in new, then we should basically have almost a 0% infiltration rate.
Right.
So, we can size our line probably better than Division of Water wanna size it based on the water infiltration as it is now.
To your point, David, the reason the Division of Water is involved, they have jurisdiction over the design of the, of the sewer line.
Yeah.
I think that design would probably could cost us.
Yeah, probably.
I think we're, it's easier for us to live in something like that legislatively than physically.
Okay, that's fine.
And I think through ordinance, we can get pretty close. Now, we've all seen it happen around this bench, eventually, places that you don't think will ever be zoned, once all the utilities are available, and there's a demand, and a good enough attorney will wrangle that puppy loose.
Yeah.
So, I think it's incumbent upon us to have a good ordinance and have, as much as we can, protect ourselves from an unintended consequence of doing something good.
What did the stockyards, I know they didn't come through us. We were hopeful that they would tie into our sewer line. That was a, you know, something we wanted. Did they, did they tie into something in Lexington, or?
No, they went to the horse park.
Yeah, to the horse park.
They bored under the interstate and went to the horse park. Which actually, that actually creates more risk for our aquifer than any other selection, because the horse park is over our...
So, they treat their own right there, then?
Yes.
Okay. Mayor, is there, as you've thought this process through and had multiple discussions with multiple people, is there any scenario that we're either aware of, or maybe even not aware of at this point, where we don't recoup the money back on our investment from the city?
Mark, I, I haven't seen, I haven't thought of it yet. Now, is there a doomsday scenario that somebody could figure out? That, maybe, but we're trying real hard with, with the attorneys and, and folks that are helping advise us to protect us as much as we can. It, it's still...
As long as there's land available and trailers to go on that land, I mean, what, what would it take in order for those two things to not be true? And I can't think of it.
Can't either.
Yeah. And, and I do, I do think you are correct that a new buyer could be asked to pay off existing debt.
Yeah.
To us, we, we have checked specifically with Kentucky Infrastructure Authority, and there are no prepayment loan penalties on the lots.
Or we could maybe keep the debt and roll it into something else. Could we do that?
David, you think that?
I mean, at that interest rate, why not?
We might have to come visit each other in jail if we did that.
No, I mean...
Chase is over there.
They're going to jail. I'm skittering a little bit here.
I'm not saying that. Y'all know. Assign it. Reassign. Assume it. That's the terminology.
There you go.
Right, Roy? Assume it.
Look at that paper later, right there. She works.
That'd be a good problem to hide. I hope we get to have that discussion, David.
Well, you know, Mayor, the thing is, is that this project is something that's been going on and on and on and on, and it's something that absolutely needs to be done. And this is an avenue, you know, you see a light at the end of the tunnel. So, I would like to make a motion for you to at least make the application.
You got a lovely resolution here, if you'd like. Peruse it.
Yeah, I'll second her motion.
What peruse it?
I'm gonna peruse it.
But if it is the gist of the resolution...
I mean, the resolution doesn't have any numbers. It just says you are hereby authorized to apply for a loan.
I might read it. Jason can read it.
I wouldn't ask you to do this if it wasn't coming back to you for...
No, we're good. I'm good.
Oh, we're doing it, doing the application.
Yes.
Let's go.
Motion's been made and seconded. All in favor, say aye. Opposed?
Chase's next step will be a step that he'll take kinda jointly with us. And I'm gonna be very careful with, with our friends on the water board. Chase doesn't work for us. Chase works for the water board. And this is our project, and we are the borrower. And ultimately, even the selection of the engineer will be done by the council. So, I've talked with Chase's board about, we're gonna be very careful about, we're gonna do this together. We're gonna do the, we've already advertised for an RFQ, so everybody can take a shot at this. And then, we'll receive the RFQs, score them, and Chase is gonna be on the scoring committee. I want him to be completely comfortable with what we're doing, even though that decision will ultimately come to you all and not the water board. Is that correct, Chase?
That's correct. And the, the scoring committee will consist of the city attorney. I've checked with him today. He's on board. Member of the city of Georgetown, whether it's, I've reached out to the finance director. But if it's somebody from the mayor's office, that's fine, too. And then, it will be myself and our collection supervisor and our director of engineering, unless somebody...
I think you meant our city engineer.
What's, I'm sorry?
I think you meant our city engineer.
I'm sorry, what did I say?
You said attorney. It's all right. You looked at me when you said it, so.
City engineer, Eddie Hightower, will be, I'm sorry, city, city engineer. And, and again, if you'd like to sit in, we'd love to have you.
What I've challenged Chase with on this is, this is a big project, and it's not like other projects we've done. And it's got some real aggressive timelines, too. And I said, Chase, we, we need, he needs the strongest team we can put together that can do work quickly. And we even, that's such an important point, that, that I was almost at the point of allowing Chase to do just a single vendor selection. But, some of this project is non-traditional to start with. So, I thought any procurement activities that we do, I want them to look as much like normal as we can. So, we're gonna do that RFQ process, and we'll bring you the results before an engineer's here.
And we'll, we'll make that selection in time for the application. And that's, that's one of the parts of the application deadline. We have to have an engineer under contract.
Yeah, they, they have to be under contract and identified in this application. So, that process has already begun as well.
Be advertised in the paper tomorrow, and due date of the 19th.
Sounds good.
And you all, you all will go under contract with that engineer, but all of those costs can be paid for with grant funds. So, council will not be out there.
Anything more questions for Chase? Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Gene, thank you. And you're gonna be out to church tomorrow night?
Over there.
Okay. Yes, sir.
Real quick comment.
Yes, sir.
Roy Cornett, I took a class years ago on valuation of mobile home parks. One of the things that is likely to happen out there is you can't buy the small mobile homes like are out there today. To go buy a new mobile home, the way that thing's configured, the big mobile homes won't fit. What's likely to happen? Those older mobile homes are gonna go by the wayside. The mobile home park's gonna be reconfigured as far as alignment for most mobile homes, and you'll see new mobile homes go in there. And so, by getting this sewer problem solved, we're gonna see a pretty major facelift happen out there, and it's my prediction. And then, that's gonna do nothing, of course, and increase the value of the mobile home park. There's guys around the country that do this for a living and make lots of money about doing just exactly what's happening here, on taking these old mobile home parks and reconfiguring them.
That needs to happen.
All right. Let's see. We are still under item seven, city attorney?
All right, listen to him.
Let's see. We have a resolution approving an application for our victim of crime advocacy funding.
That's simple.
Which is pretty routine.
Okay.
Second. Thank you. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. You also have a municipal order approving a bid for the final position on our Boeing rotation. We'd like to have three, and then we rotate among them. If this person met the price of the other two.
Motion.
Thank you.
I'll second.
Second. Thank you. Is all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. Item I, a resolution approving an MOA for state contingency funding.
That's your $500,000...
That's our $500,000 grant to help... Motion. Thank you.
Second.
Thank you. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Who we?
Why couldn't all love him like this?
All right. I'm gay. Uh, let's see. Uh, we're down to, well, Andrew, we wrapped you up?
Oh, thank goodness.
Human Resources, second reading of the amendment to the personnel ordinance, sponsor Mr. Showalter.
Nornis amending section 2-111 subsection C of the Code of Ordinances to establish and remove certain positions. Summary, one, amend section 2-111 subsection C of the Code of Ordinances, which sets forth the classifications associated pay grades and authorized positions for each department to add five positions of part-time police officers, school resource officer to the police department. Two, provides for repeal of inconsistent ordinances, terability of provisions, and effective date upon passage and publication. The full text of this ordinance is available for examination in the City Clerk's Office, 100 North Court Street, Georgetown, Kentucky, 4034, or at www georgetown ky dot gov. Introduced and publicly where for the first time, June 25, 2018. Publicly where the second time, July 9, 2018.
Motion's been made. Is there a second? Thank you. Uh, okay. That's a ordinance. We ought to call a row.
Mr. Thompson?
Yes.
Ms. Tucker?
Yes.
Ms. Tingle-Samms?
Yes.
Mr. Showalter?
Yes.
Mr. Lesz?
Yes.
Ms. Singer-Early?
Yes.
Ms. Spector-Comeley?
Yes.
Mr. Ratliff?
Yes.
Thank you. Next on your agenda is a municipal order from the Police Department.
Fire Department.
I was looking at fire instead of police.
It's fine.
It's a little synapse, Miss Fire, isn't it? This is a fire department municipal order. This is a big one, where we're buying a new protective gear.
Yeah. The fire gear, actually, it's for 55 sets. It's in our current, this current year's budget, that we budgeted for. It'd be basically, this'll be everybody's frontline set of gear. Their frontline now will move to their backup set. We supply them with two sets of gear.
Motion.
Second.
Thank you. Motion's been made and seconded. If there are no questions for Chief Ward, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Thank you all.
Thank you, chief. All right. Item 10 on the agenda. Counsel comments. Hey, Millie, can we start with you?
Yes, and I got one.
Good.
It's, it's not a long one, but it's a serious one. There's several people that have approached me about Hill Street. Hill Street is a dangerous situation when you're driving out of Hill Street, turning onto Highland Avenue because of the funeral home, Tucker Wilson, or Tucker Yocum-Wilson Funeral Home, you're turning onto Highland. There's cars parked on one side of Highland, all the way to the corner. Then you got Hill Street, then it's parked again, and you can't see to get out. Probably five or six nights a week, there's either, or days and nights a week, there's funeral or visitations. What the people that have talked to me about, because it's gonna be a serious accident of somebody pulling out because they can't see, is trying to make Hill Street one way toward Montgomery. That would eliminate people trying to get out of Hill Street, which is like a big fat alley, and not get hit, or hit somebody, where they're going to the funeral home for the business. So, if it could be considered by the traffic committee to make Hill Street one way away from Highland toward Montgomery.
We actually discussed it at our last traffic committee, and...
Really?
Hightower is gonna be looking at it, and we'll resume on our next committee meeting.
I had no idea. That's great, because a lot of people have really been concerned about having an accident.
Yes.
I don't think there's any homes on that stretch from, from Montgomery.
We talked about it being one way, and Montgomery being one way when you go down off of Highland.
Yeah.
Well, Montgomery is one way.
But it's been like that.
It's already one way. We need Hill Street to go.
Right. I'll let you know.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Anything else, Millie?
That's all. Thanks.
All right.
Just thank you for bringing this sewer line tonight. I told you how important I thought it was, what, 12, 13, 14 years ago, Roy and I and David talked about it. I appreciate you doing it tonight.
Sir, thank you.
Yep, it was a big deal. There's a property owner out in Oxford. I know you all have had a million of things going over the past few weeks. I think it'd be a good time to talk to him about the property.
Let this way.
Yes, yeah.
After the meeting, just mention which end, and I'll know who it is.
Okay, all right.
And I'm most of the players out there. Karen?
Oh, I did my ranting earlier. I'm fine.
You're good.
I have no rant.
Yeah? Chuck?
Well, I have one question.
Yes, sir.
If the mobile, motor home, or motor home, mobile home.
Mobile home.
If they ended up filing bankruptcy for some reason, which I don't see that, would our assignment of rents survive that?
I think we'd have to work out the appropriate legal mechanism for that. But, the way I envision it is a, is a third-party contract, and essentially, they, they're, they're the ones collecting that rent, no matter what. Whether that business exists or not, the, the mobile home parks' essentially income comes from the third-party administrator.
I just wanna make sure that the city's funds are covered, protected.
We all need to keep asking each other those questions, because we, we think we're thinking of all of them, but...
Yeah. Sometimes we think we got it figured out. Somebody asks the tougher question.
David was right earlier. We've all set the real estate closings that we thought were all ready, and then we sat around waiting two or three hours till a HUD got the balance.
We've never done that.
And you've never done that, have you?
Well, the other thing was Frank brought up this, this drainage problem downtown. And I pulled it up on the map, and I was looking. It looked like one of the fences that was washed down came from an empty lot. Did there used to be a building on that corner?
Frank Mason owned that building and had a...
No, I mean, there's like an empty lot there on it.
There was a house on the building. That was...
College, was it College and Moberg?
It's a really old...
Tore down about, so, what?
Yeah, tore down.
Frank tore down, five, six years ago. One of them was the very historic, original jockey club building.
From some of the fences in the pictures that he showed, it looked like the water had gone through that empty lot.
And hit that fence.
Hit the fence, tore it down.
Yeah.
Which changed, I guess when those buildings were tore down, it changed the flow of the water.
Yeah, it did, yeah.
So, I, I don't know if it's our fault or the city's fault.
I'm, I'm not sure in those cases either, Chuck. And I'm, I'm, I'm very aware of our limited storm sewer repair budget. We're, we're spending somewhere on the average of $800,000 or $900,000 each year out of the general fund to fix little storm sewer issues that are putting Band-Aids on isolated problems rather than the real fixes.
The big deal.
The big deal that we know needs to happen.
Well, the thing about it is, is that building is an old building, and it's on the ground. And then, you have old stormwater sewers capacity there. When you get a dam pour, like what we've got, none of it holds it. I don't care where it was, Broadway or North Hamilton or any of that, you know. You're right, it's a bigger picture.
That same storm, as, they produced some crazy results around here. Eddie was out on the, our in-town portion of South Broadway, US 25, right in front of United Banks Branch, there, there at Showalter. And Eddie actually pulled over and took cell phone video, because he was so shocked, and sent it to me. On South 25 Broadway, water was up halfway on people's wheels.
Oh, it was. I was out that day, and it was amazing. It was...
His video amazed me. And that is a five-lane major highway with drainage built into it.
But that rain came down so fast the other day, it didn't have no...
Didn't know where to go.
It was terrible.
We can't... And we can't, we can't engineer to that standard.
Mayor, didn't we do some clean-out of drains? I know we talked about this a few years ago, and they showed us the drains.
We did.
Andrew's shaking his head as if we did.
There was some roots or something in there we had to clean out and stuff.
Where, I think we have an ongoing contract where I haven't gotten with Eddie on this, but where I was with Kyle is we were under a program where we were doing 20% of those each year.
Yeah.
And we'd have them all done every five-year cycle. So I need to make sure that's still ongoing now that Eddie's on. Anything else, Chuck? I'm sorry, we kinda took it.
I'm done.
All right. Mark, you good? Anything else to come for the council? Oh, by the way, what time is it?
Kind of barnburner like that.
Listen, I was all 45...
Meeting adjourned.
Hey, Mayor, we weren't done over here.